Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the May 5, 2021 City of Imperial Beach City Council Meeting. Calling the regular meeting to order. This is Mayor Serge Dedina. And council members and staff, please mute yourselves. And when speaking at the appropriate time, please announce your name. I want to welcome everyone to our regular meeting and thank everyone for their patience and understanding as we slowly transition, hopefully, back to having normal meetings in the future when everything's opened up. But this meeting is still virtual and in person. This meeting must comply with the executive order N29-20 and all other provisions of state law. We hope everyone is at home, safe and healthy, and we look forward to seeing you, hopefully, sometime this summer, back to normal. And now the city clerk will announce a public comment process.
This is City Clerk Kelly. Members of the public are encouraged to submit their comments for any item on the agenda now via email to comments@imperialbeachca.gov as no breaks will occur between agenda items. Please note in the subject line the item of the agenda that you wish to comment on. Specify if you would like your comment to be read aloud or just to be entered into the record. Written comments will be read by the city clerk or staff for only up to three minutes. Public comments will be accepted until the mayor announces that public comment for that item is closed. For providing oral comments during this meeting, join Zoom via desktop computer, cellphone app, or telephone. The meeting details are located on the first page of the agenda. Members of the public will not be shown on video. You will be able to speak when called upon. When it is the appropriate time, use the raise hand feature on the desktop, phone app, or press *9 on your telephone. Public comments will be limited to three minutes so that business can be efficiently completed at the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And this is Mayor Dedina. City Clerk Kelly, please take the roll.
Councilmember Agiri.
Aye, yuray here.
Councilmember Leyva Gonzalez.
Leyva Gonzalez here.
Councilmember Fisher.
Fisher here.
Mayor Protem Spriggs.
Spriggs here.
And Mayor Dedina.
Dedina here. And now, do we have any communications from? Do we have the? We have communications from? I'm sorry. A little out of order. Sorry. Now, we have Finance Director Gitmed will lead us in a pledge allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor Medina. Hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And now we'll get back to the report part of the evening. I'd like to invite each council member to speak, and the order is typically seated in the diet, starting with Councilmember Agiri. Please take it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure it's very nice to be back in chambers. They look fantastic. Good evening, everyone. On April 23, I met with U.S. Consul General in Tijuana Susarnio to discuss with water quality issues. She has been working extensively with local and state authorities in Tijuana. At the state level, she informed me that she has been meeting regularly with the State Public Services Commission Director alongside EPA and Consul General Carlos Gonzalez. And at the federal level, she's had some, you know, challenges getting in touch with any of the federal agencies, and those challenges continue to be ever more increasing, given that of the budget cuts and the upcoming elections next month. But she continues to hold weekly calls with all the stakeholders locally, and we are really counting on her for continuing to push on this issue. On April 24, I attended the food drive sponsored by us, Murphy's Produce with a Purpose, Ironworkers Local 229, and the San Diego Labor Council. I want to thank Councilmember Leyva Gonzalez, School Board Trustee Mark Armoral, and the mayor for stopping by. Collectively, we distributed over 40,000 pounds of fresh produce, canned goods, and meat in Imperial Beach the day of the event, which was really, really great. I want to thank all the volunteers that came out to help for that as well. On April 23, I attended the Sandag Board of Directors meeting as MTS's representative. We had a fantastic presentation from a panel on the social equity focus for the 2021 Regional Plan. We had different perspectives from leaders across the nation on what that means and how it will be implemented, and it really generated a really interesting conversation about equity and race. And then, on April 27, I was invited to join the South County Environmental Justice Task Force convened by Vice Chair Vargas, along with Dr. Wooten, David Gibson from the Regional Water Board, and a number of other elected officials, advocates, and local residents. The group is basically convened to recommend strategies that incorporate environmental justice principles into future actions taken by the San Diego County, advocating for solutions for the Tijuana River Valley, and advocating for state and federal funding for cross-border pollution. And then finally, yesterday, I attended the press conference convened by Vice Chair Vargas in support of ordinance for a temporary ban on evictions related to COVID. The ban was approved very late last night. The meeting went on until like 11 o'clock at night. And basically, the ban is to close, the ordinance is to close a loophole left by Governor Newsom through SB 91, which is a program that supports landlords and provides up to 80% of back rent owed to landlords. If their tenants are unable to pay rent due to a loss of job or COVID, landlords are still allowed to evict their tenants based on health or safety. So I was very proud to support the measure. Thank you, Councilmember Leyva Gonzalez, for, you know, joining the letter of support along other 15 other elected officials in the region. Hopefully, this is temporary. You know, the next couple of months, when things change and the restrictions are lifted, things will come back to normal. But for, at least now, we can secure housing for, you know, in IB, as we all know, 70% of our residents are renters. So I was very proud to support that measure. That's it for me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Leyva Gonzalez.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. On the 28th, April 28, I attended the Bay Shore Bike Way Working Group meeting. Two of the projects that are coming down the pipe, the Bario Logan segment, which is a 2.5-mile, ties into Harbor Drive and 32nd Street, the construction's to begin at the end of this year, and then the border to Bay Shore Bike Way, which actually ties in the border, and then it goes through District 4, which it comes down west on Grove, and then it makes a right on 13th and ties into the Bike Way Village. And that is just going to be phenomenal because just being able to ride our bikes, have bike lanes, the intersection of 13th and IB Boulevard is going to get, you know, you know, just, it's going to be safer, it's going to have the bike lane going through it, so I'm very excited about that. And then, in addition, they voted for a new chair of the Bike Shore Bike Way Working Group. The new chair, which was voted in, is National City Councilman Marcus Bush. And then myself, I got voted the vice chair. So I'm pretty excited. I'm really looking forward to being involved and being proactive and getting out and riding my bike more. And on the first, this past Saturday, I attended, along with Councilwoman Agiri, the Citywide Edco cleanup. So I just want to say thank you to Steve South and Ivan Rubio. Those guys are phenomenal. I went over there, and I have my gloves and boots, and I was ready to kind of help them, and I'm like, dude. And they're like, you know what? You just stay over here out of the way and just wave at people when they come in. I said, okay, well, you guys have it. They're professional. They're awesome. Thank you, Edco, for a great cleanup day for everyone in the city of Imperial Beach. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher.
Thanks, Mayor. Just one item to report. On April 22, the Chamber of Commerce had a socially-distanced safe mixer, the first thing they've done this year, so it's fantastic. They're doing some impersonations. They held it at the end of the pier at the Tinfish, and Edward Kim and the chef at the Tinfish provide some great food and beverages for it. So glad to see they're moving along, and hopefully we'll see the business owners in Imperial Beach getting together a little bit more often.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Spriggs.
Thanks, Mayor. Just three items. One, on Friday, the 23rd, I attended the Virtual Sea Level Rise Working Group session, along with other coastal city representatives, coastal county representatives, and representatives from the Coastal Commission. We had a couple interesting presentations. One was on, one of the things we're working on, which is regional cooperation for addressing sea level rise. As we know from our work here in Imperial Beach, we are part of a larger community that's dealing with several serious issues that will be addressed with considerable cost. And the idea of regional cooperation, which we've already implemented with respect to our beach replenishment, sand replenishment programs of a few years ago, is going to be essential going forward as we deal with sea level rise. So we had a presentation on the Beacon JPA. A beacon is, means beach erosion authority for clean oceans and nourishment, and that's in the Santa Barbara area. It includes three different watersheds and several coastal communities who have bonded to get, band together and formed a JPA to address these issues, and it's one of the best models, you know, that we have found so far. We also had a presentation on the role of sediment and sediment recovery in maintaining beaches as well. So that was a very informative session, and we're working towards developing some best practices to recommend for adoption by the coastal cities and counties. On the 28th, Wednesday, I attended the Metro JPA, which is Metro Wastewater, our own JPA Finance Committee. And that committee reviewed the budgets for the coming year for Metro JPA and made recommendations. We had, actually had a surplus of our, in our internal operating budget for Metro JPA because of lower activity levels last year due to COVID. And that surplus is going to be passed on to reduced rates to the cities to support JPA operations. We also looked at all of the contracts that support the JPA for purposes of renewal. And the JPA is only able to hold its own with the elephant in the room, which is the city of San Diego and its sewer system, which is twice as large or three times larger than all the surrounding communities combined. The only way we're able to hold our own and keep the costs in check, because they run the system, is by having our own technical, legal, and financial expertise. And we are going to recommend renewal with some adjustments of those contracts to the Metro JPA Board, which meets tomorrow. So that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Vice. Mayor Protem Spriggs, I do appreciate the fact that you always represent the interests of the city of Imperial Beach and the people of Imperial Beach, and always helping push these agencies forward. And I think that's important for our colleagues to remember, that when we attend these meetings, we represent the city of Imperial Beach and the people of Imperial Beach. And when we're meeting with agencies, we want to make sure we're clear on our message and the mission. And so, for example, if we're going to be meeting with representatives of the United States Government to talk about sewage issues, we want to make sure that we let them know, as I did, and I have been, because I think that's important about the meetings I've had, that we're unsatisfied with their response, that we expect more. That if we're sitting on a county commission that talks about water quality, and we hear the county talk about the need for unity, that we're hoping that we're correcting them to talk about the need for clean water. So it's important, and I mentioned Mayor Protem Spriggs, he's had a significant influence on policy at the statewide level, on how we deal with coastal management issues, that we're continually pushing the agenda of the city of Imperial Beach and representing the people of Imperial Beach, and that we're always asking these agencies that have oversight of our city to do better and to do more, especially on issues of water quality. Sitting in a meeting isn't enough. Taking leadership requires pushing the agenda further, especially in this issue when it's clear the United States Government and clearly the State Department, as announced by the former Ambassador of the U.S. to Mexico, that they have let us down. And clearly made public that the United States State Department and the United States Government overlooked any issue that wasn't related to migration. That was big public news this week and last week. You can read about that in The Voice of San Diego and news sources around the country. So it's really important stuff. We need to be coordinated on our message. So if we're having meetings, we need to make sure that we're clear on what our message is and how we're going to help push our agenda to move our city forward. Attending a meeting isn't enough. With that, we attended, I attended the Sandag meeting on April 23, on April 30 as well. That meeting was on climate resilience, and I also made clear to the governors represented on climate that this state is not moving fast enough on climate. Our state is like an ossified ship. It takes a long time to get things going, and we have to move a lot quicker and be a lot smarter on climate. At the Borders Meeting that I chaired on April 23, we had the EPA Border Director attend and had a good discussion about cross-border sewage issues. But again, I think the feeling of the community and stakeholders was that we need to do a lot more on this issue and push harder on this. So I think that was important. On April 26, at the State of the City, I want to thank our city staff, and especially Courtney Stevens and Sandra Cohen for making that happen. It was very well received, lots of feedback, but it was great to talk about the priorities for the city, including public safety, parks and rec, clean beaches, and of course, reconnecting our community and getting our city back to work. On April 27, I had a good discussion with Congressman Scott Peters exactly about the need for the federal government to move forward. He gave us a lot of good advice on how we need to engage the Biden Cabinet and Senator Padilla, for example, to get this sewage and clean beaches initiative moving forward. Clearly, I made it very clear we're unsatisfied with the slow pace of progress and the fact that we appear to be going backwards and that the United States Government needs to do a lot more, and the Mexican Government as well, to address this issue. And with the news and the announcement by the former Ambassador of the United States to Mexico, it's clear that we have been let down by our own government. On May 3, I met with the governors, Governor Newsom's Regional Representative for San Diego, said the same thing, that we need the Governor of California to be much more engaged in this issue, that we need his help, that we'd like to have him come down here, and that we would expect the Governor to do a lot more to work with, to push Mexico on fixing this problem, but also to work to follow up and push the Biden Administration to help us as well. It's clear this is a non-political lack of will by the United States Government that goes back to the former administration and now continues with this administration. We have not been helped, and we need things to move a lot more quickly. And then, on yesterday, I talked to Yanni Garcia from Cali PA. It's clear that Cali PA is helping us, but I emphasize the need to make sure that we're clear on the need to push this forward, and they agreed to help us. I also communicated with Cali PA Director Jared Blumfeld about the same issue. And I want to thank everyone for the food drive, and I think that's about it. Thank you. We have any comments?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Public, City Clerk Kelly, do you have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I will start with the members of the public participating via Zoom. Members of the public, if you would like to speak on, under public comments, please use the raise hand option on the desktop, phone app, or press *9 on your telephone. Right now, we have one raised hand, and it is Eric Seiverson. Mr. Seiverson, you have three minutes. Please unmute yourself and begin.
My name is Eric Seiverson, Imperial Beach native. I had established presidency, so resident of unincorporated San Diego County, far from IBs I could possibly get, thankfully for my health. I just, I can't believe listening to Mayor Dedina. I absolutely cannot believe listening to him about transboundary flows. And now that I see Mr. Agiri, now that everybody disappears on the screen, I don't know if you listen or what. I see Mr. Leyva Gonzalez, Councilmember Gonzalez, I appreciate your presence while I speak, because I can at least note that. I don't know what administration the mayor is speaking about. Currently, Pump Station Sela, which was upgraded by the President Trump Administration by EPA Administrator Anthony Wheeler last year, is operating perfectly. Discharge is zero. The river is dry. IBWC is currently cutting brush as we, well, they won't be doing it now, they were doing it earlier today, east of Dairy Mart Road, as they do every year to prepare. The Biden Administration has abandoned us because they didn't even know about us. That is the fault of all of you here, especially Mayor Dedina, especially Mayor Dedina. I just, I just can't believe this. This is ridiculous. This isn't like starting over. This is exactly starting over. And you guys will have to go through all environmental reviews to get anything built, and nothing will be built on this side of the border, because there is no more National Declaration of Emergency at the border, which is how they built all the last stuff. This is a mess, and you, and there's no solution, and the mayor continues to lead us down the rabbit hole, continues to lead us down the rabbit hole. And as it pertains to sea level rise, Mr. Helmer and Mr. Hall are completely aware that there's a 1,200-foot, 20-year-old channel that is dracked from the western end of the Oneyanta Slough all the way to the Grove Storm Drake, artificially, man-made, and it will flood the lowest portions of the city. The leadership on climate has been negligible. The mayor has flown all over the world in his reign, and he has the audacity to tell us about climate change. Count your damn carbon footprint while you fly, sir, to destinations like Mexico City, Cabo San Lucas, Washington, D.C., because in an underrepresented city, that's where the damn youth go to learn. And this pond-20 mess, Matthew Leyva Gonzalez, Jack Fisher, write a note on behalf of the city IB and demand access to that bay. If we are not on that bay in the future, the economic, sustainable, and any other possible future for this city is buried. Bulevista National City and everybody is building to the sky, and we put in damn mitigation banking for more poison salt marsh. It's embarrassing, people. It really is embarrassing.
Any additional verbal comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have, we have another speaker. It is David Frank. Mr. Frank, please unmute yourself and begin. You have three minutes.
Okay. My name is David Frank. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. I'm here representing the IB Arts Bureau to provide an update on the Kindness and Love mural project funded by Chuck and Ernestine Kretschkamp Foundation. All five of our murals are now underway and will be completed by May 15. As part of this project, the foundation is working with Articulus Entertainment on the creation of a new documentary film, The Case for Kindness. The majority of the filming will take place on May 15 and 16 at Sports Park and the four other new mural locations. Next slide, please. The largest of the murals will be adjacent to Ladder Rain Ministries at Florence and Palm. The artist is Carly Ely, and she'll represent grasping hands and glowing heart on an ethereal background. Next slide, please. Mural in progress of Veterans Park is by IB's own Isabella Anderson. All his beautiful artwork shows the young couple whispering secrets on a colorful background of flowers and foliage. Next slide, please. There's now a mural at Pacific Realty at Third and Palm. The artist is Marissa Quinn. She shows a surfer interacting with dolphins on the way with a yellow sunset background. Next slide, please. On the Imperial Palms Apartments at Seacoast in Ebony, IB artist Michelle Lubin is producing a rendering of hummingbird and butterfly being fed by human hands on a colorful background. Next slide, please. The mural installed by IB Arts Bureau at Sports Park will be an interactive mural. Members of the public will be invited on the morning of Saturday, May 15, between 9 and noon, to write their names, draw figures, and put handprints on the mural. Next slide, please. Finally, there will be a mural tour and bike ride on May 16 at 1:00 p.m., beginning at the Ladder Rain mural at Florence and Palm. The bike ride will take about an hour and a half. Tour participants will get to meet and hear from many of the artists who installed the mural. The ride will end at Sports Park at about 2:30, where there'll be a live band and socially-distanced celebration. We hope you'll all attend. I'd like to thank the city's manager and staff. If you'd like more information, please go to ivartsbureau.com. And on a personal note, I'd like to endorse the City of Kindness proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Frank. Really appreciate the leaderful leadership on making our city better. It's very nice. Thank you so much. And the IB Arts Bureau, I'm sorry.
Mayor, this is, this manager hall, could we suspend the agenda and move to approval of the consent agenda while we, while we, we have a mix-up in our presentation? So if we could do that, I appreciate it.
Do we need a vote on that?
Yes, we need a vote to change the agenda, and then we'll go to the consent agenda, and then we'll come back to the proclamations. Thank you.
Is there a motion? My council colleagues?
Spriggs, move.
Is there a second?
Leyva Gonzalez, second.
Great. Will you please take a vote?
There has been a motion by Spriggs, second by Leyva Gonzalez, to take consent calendar at this time. Councilmember Agiri, how do you vote?
Aye, yuray.
Councilmember Leyva Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Leyva Gonzalez, aye.
Councilmember Fisher, how do you vote?
Fisher, aye.
Mayor Protem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
And Mayor Dedina, how do you vote?
Dedina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
So just to be clear, we're going to move to the consent calendar. Is that correct? Okay. Right now, we're on consent calendar items 1 through 3. City Clerk, do you have any, Kelly, do you have any public comments?
I'm moving over to the public participating via Zoom. Please use the raise hand feature if you would like to speak under consent calendar. No, Mr. Mayor, we have no public comments.
Thank you. The public comment period is now closed. I'd like to enter a motion to approve consent calendars items number 1 through 3.
Spriggs, move.
Aye, yuray, second.
City Clerk Kelly will now take an oral roll call vote.
There has been a motion by Spriggs, second by Agiri, to approve consent calendar item numbers 1 through 3. Councilmember Agiri, how do you vote?
Aye, yuray, aye.
Councilmember Leyva Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Leyva Gonzalez, aye.
Councilmember Fisher, how do you vote?
Fisher, aye.
Mayor Protem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
And Mayor Dedina, how do you vote?
Dedina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank, and now, thanks. So I just want to make sure now we can go back to presentations 1 through 2. And this is really nice. We have two proclamations tonight, both of them very nice. Number one is consideration of proclamation designated Imperial Beach as a city of kindness. And I will read this, and then we can receive public comment, if that's okay. So City of Kindness proclamation, and this is related to having these murals, but I think a lot of it has to do with really re-energizing our city and getting back, connecting with each other, and understanding that human kindness and connection is the most important thing that we have, right? That's how we developed as societies, right? To get together, treat each other kindly, and connect with each other. So I'm glad to do this proclamation of the City of Kindness. Whereas the city of Imperial Beach is an amazing city of residents and business owners that display countless acts of kindness every day, and whereas Imperial Beach City Council invites all residents and business owners to be an even more purposeful and engaging in acts of kindness and to make kindness a priority, and whereas the city of Imperial Beach City Council desires to have all employees and representatives of the city perform their tasks with consideration and kindness towards others, therefore be it proclaimed that I, Serge Dedina, Mayor of the city of Imperial Beach, together with the city council, as local government officials desire to make the world a better place and a kinder place for all. We believe Imperial Beach is an even better community when people respect one another and leaders prioritize people. We always all recognize the health, psychological, and civic benefits of kindness. Therefore, we commit to designating Imperial Beach as a city of kindness. Our intention with this designation is to take steps to foster kindness in our deliberations and our decisions, leading to kind thoughts and actions throughout the city of Imperial Beach. Great. Is there any public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there are written comments, but I'll begin first with people participating via Zoom. If you're participating via Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. Okay, there are no oral comments, so I will read the written comments. The first one is from Letitia Anderson, and she says, and she's an IB resident, and she says, "Let it..." says, "Let it be on the record that I support the city of Imperial Beach be designated as a city of kindness." The next message is from Justin Anderson, and he says, "Please let it be a matter of record that I support the city of Imperial Beach being designated a city of kindness." The next message is from Ann Porter, and she says, "Because we are fortunate enough to spend time on the beaches in the best little coastal city in California, we can share the benefits of the relaxation and appreciation of nature with our friends and neighbors. Let's share it with the world. As a member of the Arts Bureau, I'm proud that our group is expressing kindness in the new murals being painted in Imperial Beach. We all hope they inspire patience and thoughtfulness in everyone who sees them. I fully support Mayor DeDina's proclamation, proclamation, sorry, and trust that the city council and members of the public will do so as well. Thank you, Ann Porter." The next message is from Lynn Fisher, and she says, "Mayor DeDina, councilmembers and fellow residents, I want to give my full support to the city in choosing to genuinely engage in motivating and inspiring continued acts of kindness throughout Imperial Beach. I often see or hear about random acts of consideration and kindness happening in many places around town. I have seen the positive influence these simple acts have had on others that are also witnessing or reading about these things online. When these simple things happen, those around witnessing stop and smile, and their days are a little brighter, and hopefully they pass that light on to the very next person they engage with. There is so much power in simply being polite. It extends beyond the act itself and warmly washes over those in proximity. Thank you for encouraging civility and making IB a class act and the proclamation to foster kindness." Lynn Fisher. The next message is from Barbara Walters. "I would like to vote for the city of Imperial Beach to be named the city of kindness. I have lived here for several years and I love this community with all my heart. Imperial Beach really is a city of kindness and it's an awesome place to live." Barbara Walters. The next message is from Tracy Spears. "Hello, fabulous city of Imperial Beach City Council. I'm writing to act, I'm sorry, I'm writing, I am writing to ask that you please vote a resounding yes on the City of Kindness proclamation for the city of Imperial Beach to be the city of kindness. To me, kindness is the most important human trait one can possess, and it embodies so many important things. I feel that having this be our tagline," and that's in quotes, "is important. It represents our lovely beachside home in a wonderful way, and we can all strive to be kinder in our lives, right? Please vote yes, and thank you for your consideration." Tracy Spears. The next message is from Mel Lyons, a resident of IB. "Honorable city leaders, I write to express my strong support for and urge your proclamation that the city of Imperial Beach is a city of kindness. A remarkable quality of the inhabitants of Imperial Beach is the inherent kindness expressed already here, between and among neighbors, businesses, and those who visit. This evident kindness is one of the things I love about living here. In my life, I've discovered that kindness is infectious. Openly showing and expressing kindness encourages kindness in others. Together, we can face all challenges, and there are plenty by approaching each other in kindness. I support having the city proclaim, proclaim this officially. I remain grateful for your, your work on behalf of us all. Kindly, Mel Lyons." The next message is from Patty Bowman, a resident of Imperial Beach, and she says, "I support a proclamation designated, designating Imperial Beach as a city of kindness." Thank you. The next message is from Michelle Gorse. "Hi, please note that we own a condo, and it's within the city of Imperial Beach, and wanted to make sure our vote counted. We support the proclamation designating IB as a city of kindness. We wish that our comment will be on record but does not need to be read aloud." Well, I read it aloud. Thanks so much, Michelle Gorse. The next message is from resident Sheri Hanson. "Hello, my name is Sheri and I am a member of the Imperial Beach Arts Bureau. Our organization has been working in tandem with artists to complete five murals throughout Imperial Beach. All of these murals depict kindness, love, and ecology. They symbolize what Imperial Beach is all about. Our community works together along with our elected officials to enhance quality of living here. I vote to make a proclamation designating Imperial Beach as a city of kindness. Thank you, Sheri Hanson." And then the last message is from Josie Hamada, and she says, "Welcome to the City of Kindness Movement. This proclamation follows the World Kindness Movement that I've been sending kindness cards in the US and abroad for years. I support this proclamation here for the Imperial Beach because the IB community steps up when there's a need to support the various causes that's asked. Thank you for doing this." Josie Hamada.
Great. Thank you so much. The public comment period is now closed. Just making sure we have no additional public comment?
We do not, Mr.
Great. We can start city council discussion if there, people would like to speak, um, with Mayor Protem Spriggs, any comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, very briefly, um, it's, um, it's really heartening to hear all of the support for this proclamation. You know, it's, it's a rather, I think, um, you know, it's, it's all positive. What's the downside? And, uh, I, I think it's a good thing that we're considering adopting it. I, I have spoken and written, uh, in this, our community over the years about the importance of civility. Civility is kind of a subcategory of kindness. Kindness is, to me, applies to every aspect of our lives, what we do within our families, what we do with each other out in the community, uh, our policies of a city government, et cetera. Civility is really an important concept in the political dialogue, in the dialogue amongst policymakers, city council members, um, members of the community addressing the city council, et cetera. I think it's very important under the concept of kindness and civility that we at all times try to be appreciative of each other, uh, even though we have differences. We're all different human beings. You can look at, look at the screen and see we all don't look the same. You know, we all are not the same. So civility and kindness to me are the things that will get us through everything together and lead to a better Imperial Beach. So I'm in favor of the proclamation.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Fisher, any comments?
Yeah, you know, I think this is just perfect timing for us as we talk about our reopening plan tonight. And, you know, if anything, the last, uh, 12 to 15 months has taught us a great deal about ourselves and what our community is capable of and to take care of itself. And, uh, you know, I hope as, as we go forward that we don't forget the kindness, the love that we felt, that we've shared, and that we want to see within our communities and within our lives and our families. So, uh, I, I'm so grateful to have a proclamation like this before us tonight and absolutely support it and thanks to those who, uh, from the public, you know, came out to support it and offered their, their sentiments. It's great to see that, you know, people are interested and they're willing to, uh, put it out there. So thanks, uh, for this proclamation.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Leiber Gonzalez?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, Councilman Fisher hit it. The timing of this could not be better. After what everyone has had to contend with, with the pandemic, um, it, it, it is entirely correct and, uh, individuals need to focus more on, on the outward and, and looking positively how we're able to overcome, um, something of this nature, and, um, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Councilmember Gary?
Thank you. I want to echo what Councilmember Spriggs mentioned. I think that's absolutely true, civility, uh, you know, positivity and above all, respect, respect, uh, for residents, respect for our colleagues. I think it's incredibly important and I am very, uh, grateful to see so many comments in support. I think that reflects, uh, very positively on our community and, uh, how special a place we have the honor and privilege of leading. So, thank you.
Great, thanks, everybody. I really appreciate all the, um, the support for this. I know in my own family, I was, I was in 1974, and my grandmother Lottie had come from France to visit, and I woke up really early in the morning and she told me the story of an act of kindness that resulted in my own family being able to escape the Nazis and come to the United States. And she'd gone to rescue, uh, my dad's cousins and, and, and Vienna on a train and dressed up like a man to do so. It's a story you could read about in a book that actually was written about, um, the person that she rescued, but, um, and, uh, a Nazi soldier was on the train and discovered that she was dressed up like a man and let her go. And she was able to, uh, rescue my cousins and bring them back. They survived the Holocaust. And then she was able to get my dad and my uncle on a, a boat to America in 1939. So, uh, I'll never forget that in our house at 1414 Hemlock Avenue, my grandmother telling me the story and the importance of human kindness. And that's something my mother also imparted to me, the story she told me growing up in IB about surviving the blitz in London and the acts of human kindness when she was in the underground tunnels, when the Nazis were bombing her house and actually her, her house got blown up with her mom inside it. And so, you know, I think that's something my parents practiced, and I think it's something important as we go forward. And, uh, lots of things happened over the last year, but I think all of us will remember the acts of kindness, uh, that, that happened. So, thank you very much, everybody. And with that, I'd like to, um, entertain a motion to approve the proclamation.
Spriggs, move, move approval.
Is there a second?
Labor Gonzalez, second.
City Clerk Kelly, can you please take an oral roll call vote?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There has been a motion by Spriggs with a second by Labor Gonzalez to approve the proclamation. Councilmember Agiri, how do you vote?
Agiri, aye.
Councilmember Labor Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Labor Gonzalez, aye.
Councilmember Fisher, how do you vote?
Fisher, aye.
Mayor Protem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Briggs, aye.
And Mayor DeDina, how do you vote?
DeDina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Great, thank you so much. Now we're on item two, consideration of proclamation recognizing May as Older Americans' Month, and I want to, um, ask Councilmember Fisher, who brought this, uh, to our attention, and ask that we designate this month as Older American Months, to please read the proclamation. Thank you so much, Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I read the proclamation, I just wanted to say how grateful I am is that, you know, this kind of goes hand in hand with the previous proclamation and how grateful we are for the, the people in our lives who have taught us and mentored us. And, you know, your story about your grandmother, I think, is so important in that, you know, those of us out there who have, you know, mothers and grandmothers and people who can tell stories, time to go talk to them and write those stories down. So, uh, whereas in 1963, President John F. Kennedy designated May as Senior Citizens Month, it has since been redesigned as Older Americans' Month, celebrating the contributions to our communities and the nation from older Americans. And whereas the Imperial Beach City Council recognizes the critical role older Americans play in the success and well-being of the city of Imperial Beach, and that the city is a better place because of their efforts. And whereas the Older Americans theme for 2021 is communities of strength, and older Americans have built resilience and strength over their lives through successes, failures, joys, and difficulties. The city of Imperial Beach can benefit from those experiences and knowledge gained. And now therefore, let it be proclaimed that I, Jack Fisher, along with Mayor Serge DeDina and the rest of the Imperial Beach City Council, recognize May as Older Americans' Month as a time to recognize and honor the contribution and roles that our older Americans play in our society. As we celebrate older Americans, we can recognize with special emphasis the power of connection and engagement in building strong communities. One of the many ways we can nurture ourselves is by connecting with others, which plays a vital role in our own health and well-being and that of our communities as well. Please join us as we promote May as Older Americans' Month and celebrate the many ways we are connected and strong through their countless contributions.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Fisher, again, for bringing this to our attention. City Clerk Kelly, do we have any public comments on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I will start with members of the public participating via Zoom. If any members participating through Zoom would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature. Okay, we have no oral comments, but I do have two written comments. The first one is from Josie Hamada, and she says, "Older Americans' Month, I support this proclamation for many reasons. The senior population has supported the community is many different, in many different ways, and I'm very proud to be a part of the senior population of IB that supports the community when asked. Thank you, Josie Hamada." The next message is from former city council member Lori Bragg, and it, it combines, um, this proclamation and reopening procedures. And she says, "Dear Honorable Mayor, thank you so much for recognizing May as Older Americans' Month. It is extremely important for, to recognize publicly the important role in contribution, contributions our older community members make in our city. Additionally, it is vitally important for our reopening strategy to be one that ensures that public, um, that the safety of our employees and residents is one that celebrates and desires to reopen with a steadfast approach to protocols that ensure public health remains our optimum goal. As an older American myself, I look forward to the grand reopening of our senior center and our community. I would like to thank the entire city council and staff for their efforts during this unprecedented time in history. Sincerely, Lori Bragg." And, Mr. Mayor, that's the final public comment.
Great, thank you so much. And now we can start, uh, there any, I just want to make sure, we, public comment period is now closed. Unless there are any hands raised on the Zoom? Okay, great. So the public comment period is now closed, and then, um, if there are any comments, we can start with, uh, Councilmember Leiber Gonzalez.
I, I'm, I'm very pleased to, uh, support this and to be able to recognize all the individuals that ultimately, uh, paved the way for why we are where we are, um, the knowledge, the experience, um, my relationship with my grandmas, um, they were, I mean, I, I, I have endless stories. Without them in my life, I don't feel that I would be able to be where I'm at today. So, um, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher, any additional comments?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. Uh, Mayor Protem Spriggs?
Well, this is, uh, I think, an opportunity for all of us to, uh, reflect on the mentors we've had in our lives, uh, parents, uh, uncles, aunts, uh, others who have taught us things, uh, showed us right from wrong, and, uh, in various endeavors, uh, maybe in the workplace, uh, uh, showed us the rope, kept us out of trouble, uh, helped us all get to where we are today. I'm, I'm very grateful for those elders in my life. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Gary?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Fisher, for bringing this forward. What a lovely thing for us to celebrate, uh, you know, our, our older population, but also our mentors, like everyone has been mentioning, and how lovely it was to hear from, uh, former councilwoman, um, Bragg, uh, as a, as a fellow woman on the council. She has certainly paved the way, and it was just very lovely to hear from her. So I absolutely support this and, and thank you again for bringing this forward.
Great, thanks again, uh, Councilmember Fisher, and, uh, just acknowledge we have a great partnership with the new San Diego Senior Foundation, uh, the executive director, Bob Kelly, and founder, uh, used to be the executive director of the, uh, chair of the San Diego Foundation. So we've already gotten investments for our seniors and look forward to rebuilding our senior center and as a community center. So having a, an intergenerational community where, where all of us interact is, is really important, especially as we connect and move forward, and hopefully we'll be able to really support our older Americans or seniors, our, our most celebrated residents of IB and most respected, uh, for all that they have done and continue to do for our city. If you look at the volunteerism, our city, it's definitely skews on the part of the greatest generation. And so, again, thanks, everybody, and thanks again to Councilmember Fisher for bringing this forward. With that, uh, is there a motion to approve?
Motion by Fisher?
Is there a second?
Labor Gonzalez, second.
Great. City Clerk Kelly will now take an oral roll call vote.
This is City Clerk Kelly. There has been a motion by Fisher and a second by Labor Gonzalez to approve the proclamation. Councilmember Agiri, how do you vote?
Agiri, aye.
Councilmember Labor Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Labor Gonzalez, aye.
Councilmember Fisher, how do you vote?
Fisher, aye.
Mayor Protem Spriggs? Mayor Potem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Briggs, aye.
And Mayor Dina, how do you vote?
Dina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Great, thank you so much, everyone. And I want to thank all the residents who provided comments and feedback. Really appreciate it. And now we have the ordinance's introduction and first reading and public hearing, item of the section of the evening. And item number one is public hearing to consider ordinance 2021-1201 adopting the five-year through FY22 through FY26 sewer service charge. And I'd like to declare the public hearing open, and Public Works Director Minnichelli will introduce the item, followed by a report by Carmen Casner, city engineer.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to introduce Carmen Casner, Regional Managing Director for NV5. She's also the city's contract engineer. She'll be handling this item and the following public hearing item as well, as we discuss changes to the city's sewer rates and sewer impact fees. Carmen, please take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and members of the public. On March 17th, we presented the findings of the wastewater rate study report, and it was approved for sending out to the public in compliance with Prop 218. Mailings were sent to property owners in the city on March 18th, and this public hearing was additionally noticed in the newspaper. Next. This evening, we're looking for council to take one of three actions: hold the public hearing and introduce the ordinance, provide direction to the city manager to revise the ordinance, or request additional information and continue the public hearing to a date and time certain. I'm going to keep the presentation, next slide, please. I'm going to keep the presentation really short, but I do have my full presentation from the last time in the slide deck and can repeat any parts or answer any questions that have come up in the last month and a half. But basically, there's three major issues associated with the need for the increase. Your wastewater billing is based upon water use, and water use is down, but your wastewater treatment is not down as much. The city has very minimal reserves, and because you bill on the tax rule, you need at least six-month reserves to operate properly. You also have aging infrastructure, as everyone in the nation is talking about with the feds considering an infrastructure bill. We have major capital improvement needs. Next slide. Your rate structure meets all industry standards and federal and state regulations. We're not recommending any major rate structure changes, but we are recommending two minor changes. One, recommending removing the cap on water use. Your water, your bills are based upon a combination of a base rate and a flow calculation. Currently, water use is capped, but because of the increase in accessory dwelling units and water conservation, we didn't feel that cap was appropriate any longer. Secondarily, we are recommending changing the return to sewer percentage for single-family residential and then governmental and institutional properties to increase it from 75% to 90%. This is due to the fact that we have a lot more conservation going on in the city, and thus, there's less irrigation occurring, which would cause the return to sewer to be less than normal, less than 90%. Consequently, you also have a lot of wastewater that's being generated through infiltration. Next slide. So the proposed rates, we are proposing a 3% increase to your base rate, which is the flat rate that's charged on an annual basis based upon your meter size, and 3% to your commodity rates for each of the next five years. A commodity rate is the amount, is basically a calculation of the amount of flow that you consume in, but they return to the sewer in wastewater. Next slide. The title's wrong, the slide is wrong, but the base cost will be increasing as well. So depending on the size of the meter, if you have a 3/4-inch meter, the base charge is going up. The 1-inch meter, all the meters are going up approximately 3% a year for each of the next five years. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Mayor Dina to take one of the next actions. Next slide.
Great, thank you so much. City Clerk Kelly, do you have any public comments or written protests?
Mr. Mayor, I will start with the people participating via Zoom. For those of you participating via Zoom and would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature. Okay, we have no oral comments, and there are no written comments, but we did receive one written protest. And staff is monitoring through the end of this public hearing if we receive any other written comments before the end of the public hearing.
Great, thank you so much. So make clear, there was one written protest, but no public comments, is that correct?
Correct, one written protest.
Okay, great. So I will start with city council discussion, and just check, it's where I'm going through the roll, so everybody gets a chance to start first. And now, so are we, questions or comments, starting with Councilmember Fisher?
Yes, thank you. This is, this is kind of a hot topic. I've received a few messages and emails regarding our sewer rates going up again. First comment I got was, that was my wife expressing her dissatisfaction. So I do have a couple questions and comments. Ms. Casner, you mentioned that the aging infrastructure of our sewage system, will these increases help fix that problem?
Yes, the city has an active CIP program, but it takes annual money every year to address fixing pipes that are determined to be leaking, pump stations that are starting to fail because they are, reach their first useful life in many cases. And so, yes, this is addressing the aging infrastructure as well.
And, Mr. Minnichelli, do we, do we have an ongoing plan for fixing the infrastructure, or do we kind of put out fires as they come up?
The city has a sewer master plan that was completed by a different engineering group last year, but it's specifically, you know, we've had extensive inspections done at each of the pump stations, and we do try to head off the problems in advance, so that master plan is what we will use to actually select the projects for construction over the next five years.
Fantastic, thank you. And then, in the presentation, Ms. Casner, you had something that said it went, it's going from 75% to 90%? I'm not really clear on that. Could you just explain that briefly?
Yeah, so what happens is, when you use water in your home, that isn't all consumed. It isn't all, doesn't all flow to your wastewater system. And so, what has historically been used is assumed that there's been about 25% of your water for a single-family residence gets used on irrigation particularly. With conservation occurring, right now, most properties, most of the water that is bought or flows through your water meter flows out through the waste system, through your sinks, through your toilets, through your showers, through your clothes washers. So the 90% is a more realistic return to sewer flow expectation. It used to be lower.
Would this directly impact, you know, the bills, the sewer bills? Because I know it's not a flat fee, so it will increase people's bills?
Yes, it will.
So, so, boy, that's a hard one. I mean, we're looking at it, and I did the numbers from, you know, 2016 to 2026 in a 10-year period, our rates are nearly double. They're, I think they're 92%, if I did my math kind of close. I mean, do we see this in another 10 years? Are they going to go up 100%? Because, you know, one of the things that concerns me is the many families that live in Imperial Beach that are working and, you know, have active income, I think, could probably support this. But, you know, you look at the, some of the older people, the elderly, the retired, and, you know, the ones who are even with the lower incomes, how do we sustain this as a city? Well, you know, I know the city of San Diego is kind of in charge of the increase, but I'm not sure I really like going from the 75% to 90% if it means that our bills are going to go up significantly. So, you know, I just, boy, that's a hard one to swallow. We're looking at 3%, which sounds pretty dandy, but in realistic point, it's almost an 18% increase. Does that seem reasonable to, you know, say?
It's actually about, for a median user, and if we wanted to go to slide nine, Tyler, I could, I've got the calculations again. It is, it is basically a 15% increase. So basically, a current median user in the city uses 7,700 cubic feet of water annually. Your, you can reduce your bill by using less water. That's a, water conservation is a big component of this. So if we use the current rates, everyone gets, a single family gets charged $232 for an annual base charge for a flat rate, and then there's $8 and, $5.80 of commodity water flow that is then calculated by taking 75% of the 7,700 cubic feet to equal a total. So the current bill for the median user would be the $232.41 plus the 7,700 cubic feet times $5.80 per 100 cubic feet times 75% of the flow. So that equates basically to the $567 or $47.28 a month. Go to the next slide. With the revised rates, the base rate does go up 3%, which is now $239.38. The commodity rate increases 3% to $5.97, which is your flow rate, but we increased return to sewer by 90%. Consequently, the proposed bill ends up totaling $653 annually or $54.42 a month, which is a $7.14 a month increase over your current bill, which is a 15% increase. So water use greatly affects bills. The problem that we've had is that over the last five years, we've had such a conservation, amount of conservation, but our wastewater flows have not also gone down. We have a lot of infiltration throughout the system as a whole, and that's why our costs have had to go up, because we are still paying to treat a high quantity of wastewater. So what's, going in the future, you asked about the future. I, I don't have that much of a crystal ball, but costs will probably continue to go up, but I don't think at the same rate. There were some major cost increases over the last few years due to groundwater programs, some advanced costs that we're receiving from the city of San Diego, but treating water is expensive.
Right, well, you know, I get that. I just, I look at it, and you mentioned, you know, there's opportunities for us as residents to save water and to practice, you know, some conservancy. But I wonder really, like, what could a family, I have a family, there's six people who live in my house. How do I, you know, look at, I can't have one of those showerheads that, you know, you have to spend 15 minutes rinsing off. I just, again, and you mentioned the crystal ball. I don't know if I think that's true, because I just don't see it going back and even being reasonable. And, you know, like I said, this is a big, big expense for people to swallow, and unfortunately, there's no real whole, whole lot of choices for individuals, especially those on fixed incomes, to, you know, have some reversal of this. This is, I don't know, I just, I hate to see the sewer rates go up. I know it's necessary to create infrastructure and to do what we need to do, but again, the 90%, I just, that's a hard one for me to understand, because I just don't know about the study about that.
So the things you can do as a homeowner, the current fixtures that are out there are much better than they used to be. So there used to be a lot of problems with, when the original low-flow toilets were available. The new ones are amazing. They have, they can flush amazing amounts through very small, with very small amounts of water. Current washer and dryers use significantly less water. Just upgrading your appliances and your fixtures can make a huge difference in water use, because everything's built to new green building code standards that are very low water use.
I absolutely believe what you said, because I know, I walk through, you know, the local stores and see that stuff. But again, I'm talking about the people on fixed incomes. How do, how do they, you know, get to the point where they have the opportunity to save water? That's my biggest concern. And I know you can't answer that, because again, that's a, that's a hard one to approach. That's where I just, I'm coming from. It's just, I feel like that's a really hard one for me. So that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Are you done, Councilmember Fisher? Just want to make sure, you were asking questions, any additional comments? Are you okay?
I'm good, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Well, you're not, I'm sorry. You're good being finished, definitely heard you, and I think that promulgates a better discussion. It was nice that we heard from Councilmember Lori Bragg, because I think she was a leader in helping us understand water conservation in the last drought. So I mean, that's something we talk about at an upcoming council meeting, is looking at ways we can help our residents save water and save money on their bills. So thank you for bringing up those great points. Mayor Potem Spriggs, again, another leader on this issue, and I'm sure you have plenty of questions.
I have to take hats off to my colleague, who asked some really good questions that were along the lines I was going to pursue. I think we need to sort of put this into, into a little bit of sort of regional perspective as well. So, Ms. Casner, I wanted to ask you in terms of what other cities are doing, et cetera, and what the metro system is doing. The, but, but first, one of the, one of the ways in which all of us have been really kicked in the neck through the water conservation efforts that we have made is twofold. One, water rates have gone up as water usage has gone down, and the water supply people will tell you the reason is that the infrastructure costs remain the same or increase because with less water going through the system, deterioration accelerates. That was a surprise. I served on the Independent Rates Oversight Committee a few years ago, and when I heard that, I almost, I almost screamed, kind of like, kind of like you, Jack, when I heard that. But that's, that seems to be a trend as well. So, you know, in a way, the more we save, the more we, we end up paying on the water side. And then on the wastewater side, when you, when savings take you to a higher percentage of water that's treated as wastewater, going from 75 to 90, you get it on that end as well. So it's, I think the only way to try to make ourselves feel a little bit better about this is whether or not we have any control over it. And that's the question really, other than usage, water utilization, which cuts us negatively on both ends, as I just mentioned. It helps to some extent, but as long as we don't go to 95% or 100%, maybe it won't hurt us any further on that basis. But I'm not sure about the water costs side of things, which is not the issue in front of us. So I guess my, my question is, the 75 to 90, is that a regional basis, or is that an Imperial Beach determination? I think I know the answer, but I think we need to hear it. And secondly, when we look at the chart of what the other communities are paying in water rates, which is a slide I'd like you to bring up after you answered that first question, Ms. Casner, we are third highest, and the question is, why are we on that end of the scale instead of the lower end of the scale? So let's start with those two questions.
Okay, so the first question is, where, where this?
Is everybody going?
Sorry, sorry.
90, or is it just us?
Well, there's, everyone does their billing slightly difference, differently. Some bill upon their fixed winter water use, which then you take a calculation of your January, your December, January, February, March, and average, or calculate that your water use, because at that time, you're assuming that you're not having any irrigation occurring. That's where some people bill. Other people bill with a flat rate. So a flat rate is a, your single-family residential, they pay the, everyone pays exactly the same But 90% return to sewer is an industry standard now. It is not 75% anymore because of conservation, that very few, just less water is being used externally, and so anything in the homes is externally, and so anything in the homes is returning to the sewer. I help with the rates for El Cajon and National City and even in El Cajon where they do the fixed winter, the fixed winter is not that different from the rest of the year. It's, it's really actually pretty close. So that's why it's, industry standard is saying that 90% is very standard now.
But we do have some local autonomy over, over that.
Yes.
Especially in terms of whether we gradually approach 90% or whether we jump to 90%.
Correct. We, in discussions with other city staff members, that was the direction, was to do this in one jump. It could absolutely be spread out over a period of time if council directs us to.
So let's stay with that before we go to this next one. Well, let's go to this next one and then go back because I think people can see where we are.
Yeah, so this slide shows that you're currently in fourth, at the fourth highest The next slide has you increasing because of rate increases that we know you will be increasing. However, I do not know what Lemon Grove's rate increase, they have an approved rate case, but they also deferred it the last month. So I don't know for sure what their current rate increase is going to be for this year. But part of it is you have a smaller system and you have a really high wastewater flow generation. So as a city, you're returning more wastewater, more wastewater needs to be treated than water is being purchased. That impacts you greatly for your costs of how much you have to pay to Metro because there is so much infiltration in the system, and that's not in the main lines alone, but in every single lateral or most laterals, there's infiltration seeping into the lines. You just are treating a tremendous amount or having to pay for a tremendous amount of water to be treated all the way at Point Loma. So it has to, you also have to go a long ways from here all the way up to the airport and then back down to Point Loma.
This is Public Works Director Minichelli, and I'd also like to point out, some of this is geographical. You see that Del Mar is the end of the line to the north. Imperial Beach is the end of the line to the south. We have 11 pump stations to, to send our sewage back uphill towards San Diego, and a lot of places don't have that kind of infrastructure in place because they can simply rely on gravity to take their, their sewage toward, toward Point Loma. So there are some additional features like that that are unfortunate, but, but required.
All right, thanks for coming on, on that. So I would ask both of you this question, which was the one I was, I was leading up to, and that is the amount of leeway that we have to gradually introduce these increases. And that goes to the question of, of, of our obligations to the metro system and when, whether we can meet those obligations by a slower rate of increase than the one that's proposed here, or whether the only way we can meet those obligations in terms of our share of those costs is, is by the proposed lump sum increase or all at once increase, let me put it that way.
Well, you either need to increase the percentage of increase, so instead of a 3% increase, make it a 4% or a 5% increase and not go as high of return to sewer quickly. I mean, you have cost needs. You have expenses that are, you know, out there. You've got your staff for the public works. You have the cost of the treatment. So it's one way or another, it's, but it's still, because 88% of the flow, 88% of your bills are either single-family or multifamily, it, they have, they carry a large portion of the cost of the system. So it's kind of six, one or half a dozen, you know, you either increase the base rate for everyone and transition in the return to sewer at a slower rate, or you keep the 3% and do it more all at once.
What, what you are saying with that, that statement is that, is that the total amount of, of, of revenue generated from the rates has to be what it is in order to meet the obligations that you mentioned, the regional obligations as well as our local departmental obligations or costs, I should say. That's really kind of what I was getting at. Are we, are we, are we meeting those needs? Is there a way to more gradually build up to the point where we're meeting those needs? Or are they there right now? If they're there right now, it seems to me that we're probably in a pretty, we may be in a deficit situation if it has to be this drastic an increase. It just strikes me intuitively that this is something that could be approached over time rather than such a large increase annually, up to the point where we are in balance or, or have, have the right fee structure to meet, meet the costs. I don't know, Eric, maybe you have something to, to comment on that, but I'm, I'm also taken by the amount, when you add the different elements, the amount of increase, especially initially, and the effect that could have on some of the ratepayers.
It's, it's a very tough situation. We have a certain amount of funding we need per year. The only way to avoid that is to maybe do something our neighbors of the south do is put off certain capital improvements that that's, my personal thought is that you end up paying for that later on. Whether we gradually increase the return to sewer, as Carmen stated, that means we're going to have to look at an overall rate increase that, that needs to move up. And quite frankly, for equity's sake, the return to sewer at 75% is not equitable to all users across, in this city. We don't see huge landscaped gardens in the town, that kind of thing, that would be more indicative of that kind of return to sewer. We're seeing, the calculations are clear. We, we have quite a bit of return to sewer, and it's nowhere near 75% for this town. It's, it's much higher. It is closer to the 90. And at some point, we need to get there. Whether we slow it down, that, that's certainly possible. We've talked about doing that, but it would mean, in order to get to the final numbers we need to get to, short of avoiding certain costs, we would need to increase the overall rates, higher than 3%, which 3% is, you know, that's not out of, you know, that's, that's, we're pretty lucky to be at that number. San Diego is talking about some major numbers for their, for their users that are nowhere near 3%.
Yeah, I think the 3% is, is, is all right. That's transparent. That's above the, above the, that's visible. It's the, it's the, essentially the 15% or maybe slightly less than that in one year, going from 75% assumption to 90% assumption of wastewater from water. That is the, that's where the lion's share of the increase is, is, is coming from. And that's why, and it's not really visible to everybody. You have to kind of pull it apart, peel the, the onion, the way we've been doing here tonight, in order to understand that and for the public to understand it, what they're, what they're really paying and why the increase is, is as much as it is. To say 3% when it's really not 3%, it's a lot more than that is, I'm glad we're having this discussion to make it, make it clear. So I, I would put it to you once again as to whether or not we can slow down that transition from 75 to 90 by a year or two without, without doubling down at the back end of it. And secondly, the infusion point that you made, Ms. Kastner, and Eric, and I know, Eric knows about this, I've heard about it before, that's, that's due to, it seems to me, two factors. One, the age of our system, and secondly, our water table and our location. And we're getting, we're getting water table water into our system and we're paying for that. And is there a way we can gradually, maybe with grants or some other source, modernize our system so that we're not paying for, for sewage, water treatment that we're, that we're not generating? The people of Imperial Beach aren't generating that. It's, and I don't know what percentage of the total flow is from infusion. It may be so small that it doesn't matter, but I have a feeling it may be significant. Do you have a thought on that?
Well, it is majorly significant because you're treating 30% more water than is being purchased from Cal-Am annually.
There you go.
So yes, that water is coming from infiltration and yes, there are program, you know, there is ways to address it, but it is very costly. And again, gets back to the capital side. The city has been doing capital projects to reduce the infiltration on their main lines. Correcting and addressing all of the individual laterals is very expensive. Florida has, there are men, means and methods to do it. There's some chemical grouts that, that like they use in Florida extensively that can reduce it. Modernizing it is very, again, it just, it's, it's invasive because it's also on people's private laterals. And, but yes, it can be done to start to address. It's just not, it's going to be very difficult to get it done anytime quickly to reduce the infiltration. As far as the, you know, the overtime, I mean, you're, you are kind of in a deficit right now because you have, you know, even last year, we did a metro pass-through because the bills were coming in higher than what was projected as part of your wastewater rate case. But you haven't been, the only reason you haven't been in a major deficit is because you've had some construction, new buildings and new construction going on that has had some nice infill, nice backfill of your wastewater system for capacity costs. So you are really running behind where you need to be for actual rates. Again, as Eric said, if you were to, you know, to do less capital, but you're only, we've only included $700,000 a capital improvement budget, and today's, today's construction costs, that isn't a lot of projects.
Okay, I think, I think that's it for me. I don't want to take all the time, but I'm glad to have had this dialogue. I hope that the minutes reflect all of the questions that our council is asking in the responses because I think this is a, this is a big issue for the public and we need to really, everybody needs to really understand that we don't have a lot of choice here. I think that's, that's the point. And, you know, these systems have to be maintained or we're going to have problems, as was alluded to, that they're having south of the border with, with breakages, leaks, et cetera. And that will be more expensive to fix those things, plus it'll be nasty if it happens. Anyway, I yield to my, my next colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spriggs, and Councilmember Leva Gonzalez. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, stop that. Councilmember Gary, sorry, going and trying to get everybody in order. So it's Councilmember Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I, I very much appreciate the rich discussion because no doubt, it's, it's concerning and it does make us feel like, a little bit like we're painted into a corner, especially coming out of COVID and all the economic and financial hardships that our community is experiencing right now. And I'm appreciative of the question that was raised about grants or supplemental funding because I was actually thinking that as an option. And, you know, just a reminder that, and I, I don't know, to be honest, if this is even being considered within the infrastructure bill that is being considered right now by Congress, there may be support for sewage infrastructure for small cities. I know that the Biden administration has really prioritized giving more aid to local cities. So that could be something we could explore if we do indeed decide to delay this a year or two, you know, to just give our residents a break and maybe explore alternative sources of, of funding, just an idea. I mean, like I said, this is a very complicated issue, and I do share those same concerns with our, our residents having such a large increment. And, and I understand the geography of it, that makes sense to me, but it's still, it feels pretty unfair. So, you know, I'm, I'm open to exploring those as options if they're a possibility, if, if my colleagues decide that, that's the, the option to take. But no doubt, this is a complicated issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Leva Gonzalez.
I have one question. So you had mentioned that some of the infrastructure may have to be addressed or repaired. Who exactly performs that scope of work? Is it our workers for the city of Imperial Beach or is that subbed out to contractors that it'll be out to bid to perform that, that type of work?
I can address, this is Eric, Public Works Director Minichelli. For, you know, depending on, it just kind of depends on the scope of that work. If it's significant, if it's outside of our area of expertise, we get the work designed and then put out the bid and, you know, the lowest qualified bidder are selected to complete the work. There's plenty of work that happens within those pump stations and our sewer lines that can be addressed by staff, but we have, we have a small crew, four people in the field, and we address as much as we can internally, as best we can do it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Additional questions or comments? Are you, are you okay, Councilmember Leva Gonzalez?
Yeah, I'm good, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Thanks, everybody, for the comments. I want to thank Ms. Kastner for the, the, the presentation and Public Works Director Minichelli for some of the insights, especially just in regards to the geography issue and, you know, why we have to pay these fees. And then also raising the issue of, we only have to look across the, the border to see a city in a state that actually doesn't charge people very much at all, if anything, negligible costs, it's a completely unequal system where people pay the same amount regardless of how much they use for water, and then barely at all pay any sewer fees. And in fact, the system's so bad that the same people that run the sewer system are accepting bribes from corporations like Home Depot and others to actually allow them just to direct their sewer discharge right into the Tijuana River, which we essentially pay then to deal with, right? So the external costs are passed on to us. So, you know, when we start looking at the infrastructure bill, thank you, Councilmember Gary, for bringing that up. Hopefully, you know, this is something we can, we can identify some funds for, but remember, this is an issue, probably the biggest issue for every city in the entire United States. And if you're looking at the cities that probably prioritize, it would be the cities like you read about in the, in the paper in Alabama where they actually, residents have never had a sewer system and they just have, you know, septic tanks that are leaking into their front yards. That's, that's something you see all across the United States or Native American reservations in our own county where they don't have sewer systems. So there's a lot of work to do in this across the country, but Engineer Kastner, what's your? Uh, Engineer Kastner, what's the, what's the oldest date of our pipe? Like, what's our oldest sewer pipe that we have? How old do they go back? I know Coronado just replaced pipes. I think there were water pipes that were a hundred years old.
You know, I don't know that date. I know it's probably pretty close to, and the sewer side probably not that old. I mean, most of them, I think, would be in the fifty, forties and fifties. Eric, do you have?
Yeah, I, I think, uh. Public Works Director Minichelli again, uh, the, the pipes at Cal Am Water replaced in Palm Avenue SR seventy five, uh, over the last couple of years. That, those were dated to like the nineteen twenties is my understanding. Uh, so they were getting to be a hundred years old and it was busting every, well, we saw it, we, they had six breaks in about five months. We have some very old infrastructure in this town, certainly.
But the sewer pipes aren't nearly that old, I don't think.
Agreed. The sewer pipes are less, but I'm sure there's a few that are pretty old.
Thanks. I, I think the point is that, you know, infrastructure is expensive. Again, we have an example of a city, uh, state across the border that. Basically externalized their cost on us, which is why it was sewer crisis. They refused to pay the real costs and charge their residents to pay for it. So then they. Dumped sewage in the river, uh, and then try to get us to use our tax dollars to pay backup systems so that we don't get hit with a sewer. So. Um, I, I, I think the issue is. This is tough stuff, but it would be great if we can work on. We did that before and our residents did a remarkable job among the best in the county of reducing their water use. So. Uh, looking at, um, all the things we can do with Cal American Water on reducing water. And then at some point, we're going to have to address the future of our sewer system, right? Do, is it the city of Imperial Beach best? Equipped to run it or do we, um, outsource running it? It just really depends on. Uh, what we come up with, but obviously the, the costs aren't going away. But again, we talk about infrastructure and then. The cost of coastal flooding and coastal flooding to come. The biggest impacts are in our water and sewer system. That's, you know, what come out in our studies. And this is why this is affecting, uh, cities across the country. With that, are there any additional, uh, City Clerk Kelly, public comments or written protests?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, staff has been standing by, ready to receive any written comments and we have not received. Any additional, so our tabulation for the number of written protests remains at one.
Great. I'd like to. Close the public hearing then. And then I'd like to call for the introduction of ordinance number twenty twenty one dash twelve oh one. Is there a motion?
Um, Mr. Mayor, this is Mayor Protain, Protain Spriggs. I, I'm not sure that I got an answer. Uh, at least not in an actionable form to the question of. Whether we can gradually approach the final five-year rate structure. As a, in some way, give some relief. Rather than the current approach. And, um, even if it's a two or three percent on the. On the, um, on the seventy five to ninety, uh, issue. I just wonder whether there's any way we can do that. And I, I, I have to believe that there is, there's a trade off. But the trade off diminishes with the smaller amount of the, of the, um. Of the change. So I, I just want to know what, can we, can we, can we go to eighty percent? Can we go to eighty-two percent? Can we go to eighty-five without? I mean, in this first year and then maybe the rest in the second year or some other graduated approach. That, uh, will enable people to adapt to these higher rates. Uh, especially the fixed income people. I just haven't heard a response to whether. That would be doable without breaking the system, so to speak. Bad, bad metaphor. I mean, as far as.
I mean.
Excuse me, just said, as far as a motion is concerned. Uh, you know, that leads to. A, the factual question, Mr. Mayor and council colleagues, as to whether an alternative motion is, um, is appropriate or doable or feasible. Rather than an up or down vote on the, on the current resolution. So go ahead, sorry.
No, it's fine. It's just, um. You know, we make a, but our model is based upon certain projections. And assumptions and. We don't have exact water use for this past year. We have some. Anecdotal evidence that is saying that it's your. Single families maybe have used a little bit more water than normal. So maybe. We don't have to go quite as high, but I, I don't have an easy way to predict that. Um, what would happen is if we go with a lower amount. In this first year, then you would. You might mid-year in the budget have to make a budget adjustment and not. Perform some CIP based upon the amount of water that's actually, amount of bills that actually go out. But, but I don't even know, it's actually kind of a city attorney question as to how can we do that at this point in time even?
I know, Mr. Hall has a comment.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this is Manager Hall. I just wanted to make a couple of clarifying comments. One, and I think it's been mentioned, but I want to make sure we mention it again. The Sewer Department is actually an independent enterprise fund. It's a business-type activity and the costs of the Sewer Department need to be borne by the sewer rates. Um, we cannot subsidize the cost of the Sewer Department from the general fund. That's not the way the Sewer Department is set up. So it does have to cover its costs. And so I just want to make sure that everyone understands that. So if we were to take money from a different source, um, say the general fund and try to defray some of these costs, that's, that's. We can't do that. That's not allowed legally. The other thing I wanted to point out is that. You, to answer your question, Councilman Spriggs. It is possible for the city council to adopt a lower percentage increase than what's being proposed. What is not allowed. Is for the city council to adopt a higher percentage increase than what was noticed. So. I don't know if that answers the second part to your question. You're wondering whether or not that's possible. It is possible to adopt a lower percentage, but not a higher percentage. So I don't know if that answers your question. I hope it does.
Uh, it, it does. And it, this, this begs another question, and that is. Uh, if we do go to, from seventy-five to, um. Eighty-three and a half or whatever the halfway point is and then make it up next, next year as part of the plan and, uh, revised. A motion. What is the state of our enterprise, our sewer enterprise reserves at this point? In case that shortfall has to be met. Uh, because of an unexpected CIP expense. Not covered fully by the, um. By the reduced increase.
Yeah, Councilman Spriggs, uh, the Sewer Department does carry a fund balance. We do have some, uh, money that's set aside for emergency situations. Um, if this is considered emergency, we do have, um, and we do have funds set aside for that. Uh, what, if, if that happens, what staff would suggest is that. Uh, whether, rather than waiting the entire five years, if you're going to reduce that, maybe what we would need to do is come back to you. Um, in a year and let you know what impact that has had on our, on our sewer master plan. And, um, make sure that we are staying in line with the sewer master plan so that we don't continue to have a system that's decaying faster than we are repairing.
I guess this is Mayor DeDino. I'm, I'm a little concerned about this. I, I guess, um. This is the dishonest way that, I mean, the proposal is a dishonest way that governments, you know, get in trouble in which they sort of like. Defray costs until later, until there's an emergency and then they're left holding the bag. That's, again, that's what our neighbors to the south do, but. If you start looking at the way that cities and, uh, uh, you know, municipal entities get in trouble across the country, across the planet. It's by lowballing the, the cost of services and then not charging enough to do it. And it, you know, it's, it's tough stuff. But then when they get in trouble, um, they're frankly, they're out of luck because they haven't, they, they don't have the money, um, to, to do so. I'm. I would be very concerned. There's no history of doing that in the city. Um, we've kept pace with the, the, the heavy investments that need to be, to be made. So. Um, look, I, I understand it's tough, but, uh, what would be tougher is that if we don't charge enough funding. And then there's a problem and the city or our enterprise fund goes bankrupt because this, the city. You know, the city council wasn't able to sort of like allocate the funding necessary to make this happen. It's more expensive to make those expenses, those repairs in the future. So. Um, it's, it's more cost effective to make those investments now. Uh, it's a better investment on the, for taxpayers and ratepayers than to wait five years and do them and because we don't have enough money. So we're much better off charging our ratepayers now, keeping that consistent, making those investments now rather than wait till things get a lot more expensive. So I, I would hope we don't go down this road of, uh. Sort of not being honest about what things cost and then identifying potential grants, but I get very concerned about this. We, you know, we've managed a city to be, this, this enterprise fund to be well managed. Uh, so we can make other investments, but once we start lowballing things and, and not making, uh, investments that we need, it puts a city at risk.
Mr. Mayor.
You know, I, I appreciate that, uh, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, that's the last thing I would want to do would be to, uh. As you know, over many, many years, I've been a staunch supporter of adequately funding our, uh. Our, uh, expenses. And, um, making sure those expenses are, are carefully managed and that we carefully track our revenues, et cetera. I, what I'm hearing here, however, is that. There's a little bit of, of wiggle room. It's not quite clear how much is needed when. And my, my line of thought that I've been trying to express is for a, uh, a stepped up. Process that doesn't cover the five years, but really just the first year. Uh, or, or possibly the first and second year. And I haven't really heard a, um, a, 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 a strong indication. That all these funds are needed right away. The full ninety percent pass through, uh, to sewer is needed right away, along with the three percent, uh, rate increase. Leading to somewhere around, uh, I guess fifteen to eighteen percent total increase in the very first year. Uh, I think that drops down in subsequent years because there's no longer the transition to ninety percent, uh, coverage. But that first year, it seems to me, and maybe my math is bad, but that is really the, the critical year. For the ratepayers to jump up that much in what they're paying. And I'm not sure that, um. That it's going, that, that a, a slight reduction in revenue in the first year. Or, you know, by ten percent or whatever, is going to make a, a difference over the five-year period. Once, once the full rate kicks in. So that's really all that I'm saying. I'm not, I, 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 I don't think we would want to skate very thin. On thin ice here in terms of risking, uh, not being able to cover all of the capital expenses and maintenance expenses of the system. But at the same time, this is, this is, you know, a huge increase because of the, the way the calculation has changed. In the, in the first year of the, of this new fee period.
This is a Public Works Director Minichelli. Uh, let, let's get that answered right away. So any reduction in the revenue forecast for the first year? If we do not backfill that with a rate increase across the board or some other change to increase revenues for that first year, that will absolutely. Impact either the fund balance or. Something that's easily adjusted, which is, tends to be capital expenditures. Because for, you know, I, I, it's very difficult, difficult for us to adjust our. Maintenance costs. I'm, I'm not going to reduce salaries and that kind of thing. There, there's, there's things we can't really do. Easily. The things that tend to get adjusted tend to be the capital expenditures and then of course fund balance. We have the, the calculation that, that Carmen has put through here. There, there's a requirement. We, we need a six-month, uh, reserve because of the fact that all of our funding doesn't come in. You know, every month it comes in in big batches with the property tax bills and we could potentially. Reach a point of negative fund balance. Easily next year if we don't either. Put in the, the, the required increases to meet those revenue requirements or somehow change our cost requirements. In whatever year we decide to not, um, make the changes as, as shown. Uh, so. It, it, it certainly can be done. It's just a matter of do we want to. Uh, get even tighter on the fund balance issue or make adjustments to the capital expenditure issue for whichever years we decide to. Adjust the revenue input into the, into the fund. So, uh, the answer is, yeah, we can certainly make those changes, but we've got to. There, there needs to be a conversation now about where that trade off is going to occur.
This is Mayor DeDino. I guess, for, for the record, I guess, I, I'm uncomfortable doing back of the hand, you know, uh. Calculations on sewer systems and I, I'm just going to throw it out there that any agency that has. Lowballed costs and revenues for, to invest back in their systems has regretted it. Uh, whether it's the metro, uh, the government of Mexico City that didn't invest in improving their metro system and just lost twenty-three lives. Um, to, again, our neighbors to the south who do not invest in their own system, the city of San Diego that historically didn't invest in, 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 in proving their sewer system. Um, I, I, you know, I, I guess. Our residents just improved their one percent sales tax to invest back in public safety and improving the quality of life. We are making historic investments and improving the quality of life of our residents. We have provided, uh, pandemic relief. Uh, rent, endless rent and relief, um, for those who can't afford to pay their rent. Uh, we have done, gone over beyond and backwards to help our residents during this pandemic, but. We will pay, we will pay for not maintaining that sewer system. We will regret it. We will not have the resources we need. And there's one thing you can't do is that's lowball mother nature. Uh, and it's clear that mother nature is winning against our sewer system and we're going to have to. I'd rather pay now than pay later. And when I see, when I look at the agencies that we work with, or at San Diego or MTS. Their decisions to postpone and delay investments, it always ends up costing them more. Uh, and this, when this city has done that, for example, our skate park where we decided to build half a skate park. Instead of a full skate park or not invest in improving swimming pools or parks and rec facilities, it always ends up costing us more in the end. So I'm very uncomfortable with this discussion. I hope we can. I, I, I know it's painful, but the reality is I think we have to be honest with our residents and say that. It's expensive to maintain a, a water and a sewer system. We have a private water company. And that mother, we have to work with our federal government to get this infrastructure relief, um, if we can. But that this is, uh, you know, doing this kind of financial sort of gerrymandering. Won't help our city. It's not going to help our residents or our ratepayers in the end. We will pay for it. And we've never done this before.
I don't think we ever had this large an increase before either. But others, others want to say something.
Councilmember Spriggs, I, I have a question for Mr. Minichelli. So just going back to the capital expenses that you referenced earlier. So technically, just to clarify, we could go into the five-year plan on a reduced percentage rate. That we would have to revisit perhaps in a year or two and amend if so needed. Um, and then, like you were saying, it would take the hit on one, on one end or the other. If it's, let's say, the capital expend, expenditure. Potentially, we could get supplemental federal funding for those types of improvements or repairs. But is that a correct assumption?
There, there's, uh, this Public Works Director Minichelli, yes, there's potential that, that there's funding out there for, for things and we can, we can count on that, but. Uh, I, I would, I believe the staff's recommendation is to, is to fund the capital improvement program as, as, as currently represented in the rate study. If future funding comes in, then possibly, again, these are. The, the, the city attorney can come to speak to this. These are kind of max rates. If we suddenly get a bunch of funding. That allows us to not have to pull from the sewer fund for capital expenditures, let's say. There's no, I, I believe that in future years, we, we don't have to actually go the, the, up to the, up to the max rate that we're talking about increasing here. So as. City Manager Hall mentioned, the percentage increases, those are maximums. We, we would. We could be find ourselves in a situation where there's some sort of surplus and be able to, to, uh, implement. Uh, lower rates versus, uh, the ones that we are attempting to adopt today.
Well, why don't we do that? Why don't we, why don't we, uh, have a system in, in case we get federal funding and support? That we could identify a way to actually go back and then look at ways to almost quote rebate or, or look at lower rates. Based on, based on the contingency of getting infrastructure funding. I, I think that's acceptable, but. Um, I, I, I'd be hard pressed to bet that we get federal infrastructure funds, especially when there are so many cities. And, you know, American Indian reservations or Native American reservations. That literally they don't have sewer systems. I know the priority is going to be on those locations where they literally have no sewer systems and that's extensively across this country. So I, I get concerned. So I, I get concerned about betting on federal funding.
Mayor Dina, I actually have a comment because I, none of my constituents have seemed to bring it up that Ms. Kastner mentioned a 30% infiltration. So we're going to, we're going to raise rates to our residents by 15% because of 30% of infiltration. You know, I 100% agree with you about undercutting the, the system. I would say that if we do go forward, that we fully fund it with the, the proposed increases, but that we return on a short, you know, term basis here with a full report, how we are going to eliminate 30% infiltration. And then at some point, again, take a look. And if the rates are lower because we fixed some problems with outside monies and grants, that's great. But man, I just can't believe that we would not, not discuss this infiltration rate. And then I feel like we're just kind of leaking out the pipes or the pipes are leaking in, I guess, in this case. And, you know, we're, we're passing the cost along to our residents and this is a hard time. And so, you know, I just think we need to consider some different angles and have some accountability for ourselves as a city and the work that we're moving forward with.
Look, I, I agree and it's something I've brought up every time we've discussed this since I was elected is, you know, it drives me crazy that we're spending money to pump saltwater to, to Point Loma. And, you know, I think this issue of our sewer system and, you know, the infiltration and what it's going to really cost to fix that is something we're going to have to address honestly and openly, right? Like, you know, there's no easy answer here and it's not a cheap fix and every city is addressing it. And so I, I agree with you. It drives me crazy. I think all it drives all of us crazy, but you know, I, can we agree that, you know, if we get federal funding for infrastructure funding or other funding, that we can look at ways to offset costs that we've passed on? I think that's a, that's an honest way of addressing this issue and, and being honest with our residents about what it really costs to do this. And I hope we bring up the 30% infiltration rate when we talk to our congressional delegation and our senators about the need to fund local sewer systems and, and the infrastructure bill. I think that's critical.
Yeah, and that ours is probably a higher rate than many because of just our location and sea level intrusion and that seawater intrusion and that sort of thing. But I, I just wanted, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure that my calculation or my assessment is right, that we're, because of the, the transition from 75% assumption of sewer, of, of water going, becoming wastewater to 90% of water becoming wastewater. That is a one year, one time formula adjustment that adds to the 3% and makes it somewhere between 15 and 18% in the first year. And then it's a 3% on top of that afterwards. And it's that jump up to the point where it's now a level 3%, that first year jump that is my primary concern, not the three year, not the 3% annual, but that first increment. And so am I right? And I'll ask Mr. Minuchelli or
You are reading that correctly.
That's the right way to look at it.
Yes, it is.
Okay. So let's just be clear what we're, we're talking about. That's really what I'm talking about is that big, that big initial jump and whether that can be split between two years to, to ease that a little bit and whether that's really going to be a big problem. Now, there's another reason for that, just what we've been, we've been talking about in terms of potential federal infrastructure money. If, if residents pay that 18% first year, it's going to be hard to return that to them if we get money in the future. If they pay a portion of it, then the second portion may not be needed. That's where the savings will come in, that, that will be significant. So I'm just, I'm just thinking that we really need kind of to look at an alternative here that doesn't kill the system. It just means that the big increase in the first year is split over two years. And if we do get capital funds from the federal government for infrastructure for our sewer system, then we can possibly avoid the second year of, of that major increase or make some other adjustments. We're just, we're just essentially buying a little bit of time and saving our residents a, a, a big one year jump. So, and, and I know that there are, there are risks, but there's not really a certain, there's not really a definitive cost element that I'm hearing that requires an 18% jump in the first year. It would be, it would be the quickest way to restore reserves and the quickest way to have a margin of, of additional safety over actual costs. But I'm, I'm not hearing that, you know, splitting that into two years, maybe, maybe I will hear it now after saying it, is going to result in a reduction of services. Or, you know, as Mr. Minuchelli mentioned, you know, laying people off or paying them less or, or not keeping the same level of, of maintenance, et cetera. I, I'm, you know, if, I'm not hearing you say that, but if you say.
I keep, I just, Public Works Director Minuchelli. If we decide to reduce the revenues incoming in the first year, we either have to reduce expenditures in some manner or find some other way to increase the revenue. So which, it's, it's a certain dollar amount, whatever it is, whether it's a million dollars or, or what, there needs to be a, either commiserate, another adjustment in the rates to bring back that million in some other way. Or there will be, we, we do need to find a way to reduce the expenditures because we have these issues with the fund balance. Again, the, the fund balance is low at this point and we need to have that six month fund balances to, to take in those checks. So I guess I'm, I'm trying to, is there a specific project that we've got that won't happen? I, I won't say it, I can't say it that way, but there is, we have costs that the sewer fund is, requires a certain amount of funding at this point. And if we want to delay an element of that, we just simply either have to delay some costs in that first year or find some other way to, to make up the shortfall.
So we've been moving, we've been moving forward, knowing that we're going to need essentially a 15 or 18% increase in the base for some time now.
Yes, because you've had so much of reduction in water conservation, you haven't been bringing in as much revenue as necessary for the last four years because and the only way it's been made up is because you've had a lot of capacity and new development that's been covering that differential. And based on what I understood you in talking to staff, there aren't those big projects coming in right now that are going to add to the fund. If you want to go to slide 20 of my presentation, it's the budget needs are laid out in there pretty clearly of what the dollars are and what, you know, so you know, maybe the, you know, if you, the rents, revenue stabilization, that's just a, it's a minor difference. It's big dollars that need to be funded with the O and M and metro costs. Metro is well over half your costs.
Right.
I, I would hope that we can look at other ways that we can offset costs to our residents and other services potentially. But, you know, we made a significant down payment on, on paying off our pension, you know, costs. So we would save money in the future. I, I just get real, the city has had pretty sound finances over the last six years because we've been really smart about spending money in the right things and then being efficient and, and everything we do. We have a pretty tight ship for our sewer department. Every city is facing this. And so I, I just don't think we should be play games with this and try to lowball this and then not have enough money. God forbid this happened and tomorrow we have a major expenditure we can't cover. So, you know, I, I, I know it's tough, but, you know, we've been through a tough time and we've done a lot to offset the costs for our residents as much as we could. There's a lot more that we can do. But, you know, this is a year we're making historic investments in our community. And, but what we don't want to do is mortgage our future and have our kids pay for a sewer system that collapsed. Because we, we were unwilling to make the investments that's required to maintain the sewer system. Again, it's an independent agency. Any city that's done this regretted it and I'm, I will regret it.
The, the last point I think that was made is, I, I think by Ms. Kastner, I think convinced and, and Mr. Minuchelli convinced me because of this. And they said, they said it before and it kind of got lost in the discussion that we've essentially been running a, a diminishing balance over time. And they seem to be saying that we're actually below the threshold of, of, of financial security in the enterprise fund that we need to be at and that that justifies this, you know, this increase in the floor of, of the rate floor by, by roughly 15, 16%, which is the, the, the formula to go to 90% sewer charge based on water use like other communities. So I, I think I'm, I'm convinced that we probably need, we need to do that and that it's consistent with what's going on elsewhere. And, but because they're saying we are short here right now and have been getting increasingly short in terms of our funding in the enterprise fund. I, I think, you know, we really, I'm, I'm convinced personally that this discussion has brought out the fact that we need to move forward.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Spriggs. Any additional comment or I'd like to entertain the motion?
I'll, I'll move approval.
Great, I'm, I need to read it just to make sure I'm, but thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to introduce ordinance number 20, making sure City Clerk Kelly is doing this correctly, right? I'm, I'm reading this ordinance, the, the motion now.
I need to read the title first.
I'm sorry.
I need to read the title.
Okay, go ahead.
Ordinance number 2021-1201, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Imperial Beach, California, adopting revised sewer service rates for sanitary sewer service and amending sections of chapter 13.06 of the Imperial Beach Municipal Code pertaining to the sewer service charges.
Now I'm going to read the motion, is that correctly? So I'd like to entertain a motion to introduce ordinance number 2021-1201 by title only. Way further reading of the ordinance and set the matter for adoption at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting. And I think we have a motion on the floor, is that correct? Or do we have to do, have to do another one?
There was a motion by Spriggs.
And then is there a second?
Yeah, I, I moved it reluctantly, but I, I think, yeah.
Okay. I can second.
Yes.
City Clerk Kelly, please take the roll call vote.
There has been a motion by Spriggs, second by Dina, to dispense with the first reading of ordinance number 2021 by title only. I'm sorry, introduce ordinance number 2021-1201 by title only. Way further reading of the ordinance and set the matter for adoption at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting. Councilmember Agiri, how do you vote?
Reluctantly, aye as well.
Councilmember Leyva Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Leyva Gonzalez, more reluctantly, aye.
Councilmember Fisher, how do you vote? Councilmember Fisher?
Fisher, a reluctant aye as well.
And Mayor Protem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Likewise, aye.
And Mayor Dina?
Dina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Great, can you hold on for a second, someone will take a, a short break.
Are we taking a recess for a couple of minutes or what?
I just got, I got, we're on item number, we're not, we're on that, right? Item number one? Okay. Just got a little confused with the agenda, sorry. So now we have item number one, public hearings to consider adoption of resolution number 21-26, setting the sewer capacity fee at 5,943. I'm declaring the public hearing open and Carmen Kastner, city engineer, will give the report.
Yeah, again, good evening. As part of the rate study, we did look at the city's capacity charges and those charges are due to the city for new construction. Next slide. You can take one of three actions tonight, either adopt the resolution, adopt it in an amount less than recommended or do not adopt the resolution. Next slide. The capacity fee was adjusted in 2016 to $5,373 per dwelling unit. At the March 17th council meeting, you reviewed the report and presented the fact that the consumer price index has had inflation shown in San Diego County of 10.6% since 2016. And we adopted resolution to set the time in place for this public hearing tonight. Next slide. So we do recommend increasing the sewer capacity fee from $5,373 to $5,943 just to keep up with inflation because the capacity fee is basically a cost to replace the pipes are in the, that are in the system. So at this point, I am open for any questions.
Thank you. City Clerk Kelly, do you have any public comments?
I will start with, this is City Clerk Kelly. I will start with members of the public participating via Zoom. Please use the raise hand feature if you would like to speak. There are no raised hands and I have no written comments, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, I didn't press the red button. We can start today's council discussion, starting once again with Councilmember Agiri. Questions, comments, Councilmember Agiri? We can move on to council, oh, sorry.
All right, no, no comment. Sorry, I had to step away.
Great, Councilmember Leyva Gonzalez? Any questions or comments?
No comment, no comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher, questions or comments?
No, I'm just glad to have an easy one to get through.
Mayor Protem Spriggs?
No comments, thank you.
Great, thank you. This is the last call for public comments. City Clerk Kelly, do you have, have you received any additional public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. I'm closing the public hearing. We've asked for a second request for public comments. With that, I entertain a motion to adopt resolution number 20, 2021-26, setting the sewer capacity fee at 5,943. Is there a motion?
Spriggs, I'll move.
Is there a second?
Yes, there is a second.
City Clerk Kelly will now take an oral roll call vote, thank you.
There has been a motion by Spriggs with a second by Fisher to adopt resolution number 2021-26. Councilmember Agiri, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Leyva Gonzalez, Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Leyva Gonzalez, aye.
Councilmember Fisher, how do you vote?
Fisher, aye.
Mayor Protem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
And Mayor Dina, how do you vote?
Dina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
And now we have report, reports, item number one, consideration of resolution 2021-27, establishing policies and procedures for special events that occur in the city of Imperial Beach and providing an effective date. And Special Events Coordinator Stevens will give the report, thank you.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, special events can be a wonderful economic development tool for a community by attracting visitors to stay in our hotels, eat in our restaurants and even fuel up their vehicles. And most important, they can provide a way to bring the community together. But events can also be a burden to residents due to road closures, public transportation rerouting, parking and increased noise and traffic. For your consideration, we have before you the special event policies and procedures that create consistency, equity and help reduce some of the burdens to our residents by reducing the number of special events occurring on a monthly basis, notifying residents and surrounding businesses impacted by an event, clarifying how roads are closed to ensure safety procedures are a top priority among many other policies. Most of the information in this document has already been implemented in special events. But these policies are created to put everything into one complete package. I would like to highlight a few major topics and then show you exactly how these policies would apply to an event. So as you see on this slide, one new change we will implement is asking all parties interested in hosting a special event to submit their date to us by November 1st, to be added to the next year's event calendar. And these events can also be added, submitted up to one year in advance of the event date. While this won't necessarily preclude events from being added after that date, it will help us build an event calendar early so residents and visitors know exactly what events will be occurring during the year. and visitors know exactly what events will be occurring during the year. This is important for residents and businesses in the more popular event spaces for planning purposes. Once a date is established, a complete application must be submitted at least sixty days prior to the event date to receive a permit. Next slide, please. The chart on page four of the policies lists all the event venues that we permit. As last minute information tonight, we have added a new space, as you'll see on the bottom of the chart, the estuary boardwalk as an additional event venue created through the Ivy Boulevard Enhancement Project. So please note that the chart will be amended to add this venue if approved. In twenty seventeen, the city council adopted ordinance twenty seventeen dash eleven sixty-five, limiting the number of special event permits that can be issued to the same individual or group to four per year. Another last minute addition that we have is that staff is recommending to mitigate some of the burden our residents near Pier Plaza are facing. In addition to limiting the number of events in Pier Plaza to two events per month, that a person or group can only hold one event per year in Pier Plaza. This also allows them to utilize other areas of our community and create more areas for our residents to enjoy. Another important item to note in this chart is the use of alcohol, which requires an ABC license. There are only two locations that allow an ABC license with restrictions, but it is important to note that we do limit the use of outside food and drinks in Pier Plaza so we don't bring in competition for our own businesses. We encourage applicants to work with local businesses first. For example, the Silver Strand Half Marathon operated their own beer garden in previous years, but in twenty nineteen, we encouraged the applicant to work with one of the businesses located within the event footprint instead, and it was actually a great success. We received a lot of great feedback on it. Next slide, please. So now, rather than bore you by going page by page through the policies, I would rather walk you through the process as though I were the applicant. So I'll use one of our largest events that has the most impact on the community, the Ironman seventy point three Super Frog. As the first step, I requested my date in November for the upcoming year and put all the details together for my event, applied for a new business license, or updated my current business licenses, and now I'm ready to apply for a permit, I think. So how far out do I need to submit my permit? By policy, it's sixty days. However, Ironman is a highly complex event, so to give you an idea of how long the process actually takes for an event of this magnitude, we typically start working with their crew in around March or April, and their event is in September. This gives marine safety, San Diego sheriffs, and our fire rescue teams to receive the the preliminary layout and roadmap for the swim, bike and run, and then make any needed adjustments. Planning early also helps to work around construction or repair schedules with our public works crews, and sometimes they can even make adjustments to their schedules. A smaller event will, of course, take much less time than something like the Ironman, but we do still need adequate time to be able to make adjustments. Okay, so before I start the application, I need to make sure I have all the supporting documents. I need a completed computer-generated event site plan and roadmap, event timeline, which includes deliveries, setup, breakdown, et cetera, a certificate of liability insurance, a medical plan and communications plan. And note that this isn't always required for smaller events, but it is required for larger events. I need a stormwater protection plan, a vendor list, and all updated business licenses for Ivy businesses. However, note that a final vendor list can be submitted up to one week prior to an event. And then I also need County Department of Health permits, which is required if I have any food or drink at my event, which Ironman does. Applicants are also responsible for obtaining all permits and authorizations required by other agencies within the jurisdiction for any element of the event, which includes private property or private parking lots, alcohol beverage control license, which is your ABC license, California Coast Guard, FAA, et cetera. Next slide. Okay, so I have all of my supporting documents, details of my event, secured any private parking lots and private venues already, and I'm ready to fill out the application. During COVID, we transitioned to a new online permitting system to streamline the process. The link to the system is on our website under the I Want To tab, as you'll see on this slide, and it will also be linked under the special event section directly to the application once we open special event applications, which are currently closed due to COVID. As I go through the application, I will be asked questions about estimated attendance and have residents and surrounding businesses been contacted, which needs to be done at least thirty days in advance. But another notice is encouraged to go out the week of as a reminder to our residents and our businesses. Next slide. I will also be asked if staff support is requested for electrical connections, sand grading, and opening restaurants early. We do collect cost recovery for staff time involved in supporting events. If electrical will be used, the distribution of all electrical power used needs to be completed by a state of California licensed electrician to ensure the safety of the participants and the attendees. As you can see, the the people walking over the cords could be a tripping hazard if that cover was not there. All equipment needs to be rated for outdoor use. If it's being used outdoor, cable ramps or rubberized mats need to cover cords to reduce tripping hazards, and equipment must be properly grounded, and generators need to be properly placed away from structures, along with many other requirements listed in the policies. As I move through the application, I am asked about event elements like tents and canopies, food sales, air jumps, fireworks, and temporary structures, which, as you may have guessed, all require additional permits through various internal and external departments and need to be marked on my site plan. The traffic and parking plan are part of the application to ensure that I plan accordingly for road closures, ride share zones, reserved parking, and drop off and pickup of traffic control equipment. Information regarding the types of traffic control equipment is included in this section to ensure law enforcement approves equipment for the safety of of everybody. All road closures and reserved parking need to be marked in my site plan and do require additional permits. Depending on the estimated attendance, securing additional parking lots is highly encouraged and could even be required by staff. A security plan is required for all street closures and larger events and is reviewed by the San Diego County Sheriff's Fire Rescue and Marine Safety Departments. We have the final authority to require a minimum number of licensed private security guards, volunteer and staff positions, traffic controllers, and law enforcement for an event so that the event is safe. Next slide. As a large-scale event, I am required to provide a medical plan for fire rescue to review and coordinate with during the event. Often, I will also need to provide a communications plan so radio channels are synced with all support personnel during an event. Ironman is a multi-jurisdictional event, and each agency may carry different devices with different channels, so it is vital to communicate prior to the event during the agency planning meeting and may even provide event radios if needed. For a much smaller event, a medical plan may not be needed, and a communications plan may not be needed, but that can be determined with staff. The sanitation and recycling plan ensures I have the proper number of restaurants and hand washing stations to support the event, trash and recycling receptacles strategically placed through the footprint, and proper stormwater management is adhered to. Each of these elements must be marked on the site plan, and it is also important to provide drop off and pickup times so that our staff can coordinate accordingly on site. And as you can see, we don't want these trash problems at our events because then it goes into our ocean. Next slide. The vendor section of my application is where I provide extra information about my vendors that our finance and fire rescue department need to review. All vendors are required to have an Imperial Beach business license. If I have a non-Imperial Beach business vending at my event, we do have a one-day business license fee that can be paid. If any vendor is selling food, they must have a health permit, as I mentioned before, and that they can require from the San Diego County Health Department. As the applicant, I must also apply for a proper permit from the Health Department to have food vendors, and that's an important thing to remember for our applicants. Food and drink vendors are not allowed in Pier Plaza, but due to the large scale of my event, in order to not overburden surrounding businesses, and of course, after notifying and working with local businesses first, I will need to provide additional vendors to serve all my participants and spectators. So this can be addressed with staff during the application process, and we're always happy to analyze the situation. Next slide. Amplified sound can often be a great tool to control large loud, large crowds and communicate with attendees. That can also be a disturbance to surrounding residents, businesses, and even staff operations. With many events, amplified sound is definitely needed, especially a large event like the Ironman seventy point three Super Frog. In the amplified sound section of my application, I will be asked what time the sound starts and ends and why I need it. So we do not approve any amplified sound before eight AM so that our residents are not burdened by this. The speakers need to be pointed away from residences, businesses, and operations like marine safety. City officials and law enforcement may deem amplified sound too much of a disturbance, so they will either ask to turn it down or turn it off, depending on the situation. Next slide, please. Accessibility must also be addressed throughout the entire event. All events must comply with city, county, state, and federal disability access laws and regulations. If ramps are placed or accessible parking places are added or relocated, this must be marked in the site plan. For example, the Ironman placed accessible ramps in Pier Plaza for Moki, as you will see in the picture there. He's the founder of the Super Frog triathlon created for Navy SEALs. Not only did this out-of-the-box thinking serve well for ADA needs, but it also served moms with strollers who had trouble accessing Pier Plaza, making the venue fully accessible. Their staff worked with our staff to ensure no damage occurred to the turf. Otherwise, I would be charged a fee to repair the damages. At the end of my application, I will be asked to upload any required or supporting documents for the application, and then I get to submit. Once the application is submitted, city staff will do an initial review for any additional information. Then each department begins their review of the application, and an agency meeting is scheduled to for departments to meet with the applicant to address any questions, concerns, or either even get clarification on some things. After all, if any modifications are addressed and the city manager approves the application, then a permit is issued. Next slide, please. So that concludes my presentation. If you would like us to read the specific changes made in the policies, City Manager Hall has those available and can read them. So I'll kick this over to him, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Stephens, that was an absolutely excellent presentation. Thank you very much. Really, really effective. I really appreciate that. And all the work that you've done on event management and improving the professionalism of our event management process. So with that, I'd like to, before we have council questions or comments, City Clerk Kelly, do you have any public comments?
This is City Clerk Kelly. I will start with the members of the public participating via Zoom. Please use the raise hand feature if you would like to speak. Okay, there are no raised hands and I have no written comments.
Okay. With that, we're moving down the list. We can start with Councilmember Labor Gonzalez, if you have any questions or comments.
It's pretty clear, the presentation by Courtney, which was awesome, great job. It's pretty clear individuals are getting geared up for the onslaught of events that everyone is ready to start trying to plan after the June fifteenth deadline. So, you know, everyone's been locked away for over a year, so I'm pretty sure that a lot of people definitely want to start enjoying being out and not having all the restrictions. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Fisher?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the the presentation, Courtney, and I do have a couple of questions. The estuary boardwalk, kind of a unique event space for us, and I think it's, I'm glad it made it to the list. Is there, are we going to put a limit on how many people can be there? Obviously, with the going through a main traffic vein through the city, would there be a limit of people that would, we would allow to that area?
Yes, thank you for that question. So with that area, it would be very similar to like a farmer's market layout. So that that's the type of event that we visualize there, as well as weddings and things like that. With those venues, you have to look at the size of the sidewalk, right? So we would look at the estimated attendance during the review process and see if that venue would fit, or if the event actually needs to be extended out even into the roadway. So those are things that we would address during the event process.
Great, because I think I could definitely see weddings there. I mean, you can say almost any event there. That's a really awesome place and kind of unique to Imperial Beach. So some of these restrictions, I'm just curious, how would it impact our farmer's market? As you know, the farmer's market is probably one of the most favorite events for people each Friday evening and afternoon, especially as we get into the summer months. How how would this have an impact on them? Are they not considered a special event?
Correct. They actually operate under a conditional use permit, I believe, that is provided by the Community Development Department. However, what we do try to do is work with the farmer's market in conjunction with events. Sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. Perfect example would be with Ironman. Due to their setup, I think you guys have probably seen, they take about a week. So they do a full setup in Pier Plaza, and there's just no room for them to set up because by the time Friday comes, that that venue is pretty much built out. And then we do start having check-ins on Friday for the athletes, and then we have a kids' section of the event on Saturday, the mayor's fitness challenges on Saturday as well. So we're we're pretty much kicking off on Saturday, so we got to be ready to go on Friday. However, with things like the the Sun and Sea Festival, it does work very well, having those in conjunction with each other.
Great. And then just one last question I have. So from what I can see, there's no events allowed in, say, Rema Park or Tepel Park. You know, those are pretty popular areas, right? Neighborhoods have birthday parties. Are we just going to say no to people or we're not going to enforce it? What's what's our thought? Because I mean, I would love to to be able to have, you know, residents use that, especially in, and you look at over in where where Tepel Park is, there's not a whole lot of other space around there, and it's a big enough park to hold a decent-sized event.
I absolutely agree. We have even done some engagement over there as well. However, birthday parties are not under the special event application, so that would be something completely different. And since we are creating a Parks and Recreation Department, I'm hoping to work with the new director on a process going forward with birthday parties so that they can actually reserve areas. Currently, we don't do any type of reservation for for birthday parties.
So again, you know, if people are expected to fill out these applications online, is it, I don't remember seeing it, but does, in the special events category and the process, does it say at the beginning saying, hey, if you have a birthday party, it doesn't fall under this category? You can just have it as you wanted?
Right. So in the policies, it says that if any birthday party is using equipment outside of the normal park use, so if you have food trucks, things like that, that would then require a currently a park use permit, which is not the special event permit. So it's a little bit different, not as extensive.
That's fantastic. I'm so excited to see this come about. You know, I've been talking with the the president of the local Volkswagen club, and they really want to bring their event back to Imperial Beach. And I know there was just some some things that weren't really clear or covered in the first couple of years we had it. So this, I think, outlines it for them. And again, like you mentioned earlier, it keeps it fair and equitable, and everybody's under the same, you know, requirements. So I really appreciate the hard work on this.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Mayor Protem Spriggs?
Good job, Courtney, both you and staff pulling this together and into one piece and 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 good presentation. I was wondering about the idea of two events per month in Pier Plaza, which seems like a new, a new concept. And whether, what what the thinking is there, especially during our high months of June, July, August, and September, where, you know, that those are probably the most popular months to hold things. So that would limit it to eight events, you know, a four-month period. Is that really? it to eight events, you know, four month period. Is that really what we want in Imperial Beach? And I don't know what the collateral effects of that would be. Maybe the noise would be, would be lower for people living in that area, but it could affect hotel occupancy or sales of businesses, et cetera, which tend to blossom when there's events and more people in the area.
Absolutely. I can speak to that. So our thinking behind that was definitely for the noise disturbances. Prior to implementing that, we had a lot of calls coming into City Hall every single weekend complaining about the noise. So our solution to that was to limit to two weekends out of the month. However, if you notice, in July, one weekend is for Fourth of July. So it's difficult to do an event on the Fourth of July. We typically have our fireworks. So the beach is already pretty packed. So keeping that in mind, we want to make sure that we're, we're balancing everything out for businesses. We're balancing things out for our residents. And just for people to be able to go and enjoy the plaza on a, on a weekend during the summer without having an event. That has been some feedback that we have received from residents as well. However, if council decides that that's not the policy that they want, we can absolutely make those changes.
That's a change from the, from, that's a significant change from prior policy. I was wondering, are there any other significant changes in this proposed policy versus what we had before? Any other major ones? Not, not all of them. I wouldn't want Andy, as you suggested, to read a laundry list of all the different changes, but just, just the major ones. You know, this is, this is a major one. Are there others that are significantly similar?
So you have never had special event policies before. So this is new. We have implemented the two per month with one per year, just for equitable purposes, so that everybody has a chance to host event in Pier Plaza where we have a lot of walk-through traffic, people just coming to the beach. So this has been something that we've been doing as a test for, in 2019 when we did have events. And it seemed to be received very well. I think the call volume for complaints went down and our events seem to be able to be scheduled that we have annually. So.
Councilmember Spriggs, this is manager Hall. One thing I'd like to add is that the farmer's market is not a special event. That was mentioned before. It is operated under a conditional use permit, and that's every Friday, all Fridays. So there is something that's happening in Pier Plaza each week, each weekend. So every Friday is gone. So what we've tried to do is, is at least provide some recovery time for the facilities in terms of grass, grass growing and some of those kinds of things, as well as it's very difficult to have staff there every single weekend all summer long. And so there, there comes a point of fatigue on both the facilities and the personnel. So those are some of the reasons why we are looking to limit the number of events in Pier Plaza.
Okay. Let's see. I also wanted to ask whether we have any, any upper limits on, this kind of gets to the Ivy Boulevard Boardwalk and other areas. 25 is the minimum required for a permit, a special event permit. I mean, it's the threshold where one is required. And you just, you kind of look at this on a case-by-case basis in terms of how many people are expected and whether they may have, I don't know. I mean, I would just wonder whether you, you put a certain limit on events on a, so that they, it doesn't double in size and have unintended consequences.
Sure. So limiting events in an open space like this is very difficult without completely closing off the area. So we don't typically limit events. However, that's when we analyze the estimated attendance. We look at their marketing and things like that to see how many people they're actually expecting. If their proposed footprint is very small and they're expecting 2,500 people, then we're going to make it a recommendation that we look at their footprint a little bit harder and make proposals of what area they should use, or if that venue even fits the event that they're trying to do. So for example, if you had a car show on that street, it may be advisable to close off part of the street for pedestrian safety, right? So you would not just be using the boardwalk, you would be using the parking spaces and part of the street in that structure. But that is a case by case. We have to look at the, the event comprehensively.
Okay. And I guess the last question goes to the, the approval grid, the administrative approval versus things going to the city council, which would be the case of Dunes Park and Pier Plaza. Oh, I know, Dunes Park and closure of a street. I sometimes don't get asked what's going on in this area or that area of the city. It would be nice if, and I discussed this with Andy during our pre-council briefing yesterday, if, if these items could be put on consent before they're approved, if there's time. And so at least we know what they are. And if it happens to be an item that, that is a particular consequence in the community, then we can always ask for it to be pulled and further discussed. But at least we know, every council member knows what, what is going on above 25 people throughout the city, which is, which is a useful thing for council members to know.
Councilmember Spriggs, this is Mayor Dina. That's a great suggestion. Thank, I'm glad you brought that up. I think that would help. I think we're all in that same boat, you know, we're surprised as residents sometimes about the events. So I appreciate your, giving feedback on that.
So city manager Hall and I discussed this, even when I submitted the draft policies to him, I had the same idea as well. So we're indifferent to however you guys want to move forward, however city council wants to move forward. I would definitely recommend that they go on the consent agenda. And then if further discussion is needed, then pull those off, just due to the large amount of events that we do have per year.
That's great. Thank you. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Agiri?
Thank you. A great presentation, Courtney. It was very nice to have you present and great, great visuals. I, I also had that discussion with Andy regarding the, you know, the grid of approval. I think that, that would address some of the comments and concerns that my colleagues mentioned earlier regarding how do we know what's going on, or if we want to discuss a special circumstance or approve an event, or limit them depending on how many noise complaints we have or, or traffic congestion. So I agree. I think that the way we could streamline that is by bringing it on to council, before council, on consent. So I would actually move to make that amendment and have the events placed on consent to be considered for council, by council, in addition to some of the other changes that were discussed earlier and as far as the additions to the policies.
Thank you. Are you done?
I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. No, thanks, Courtney, again, for great presentation. I, I think, you know, historically, you know, over the last six years, what you saw was, you know, we tried to make it easier for people to do events. We kind of went, bent over backwards to make it easy and then charge fees. And then what happened is, you know, you got a lot of groups taking advantage of the city, probably received more complaints on, you know, unpermitted events, people taking over our parks, whether it was, we had a whole issue of birthday parties with the giant, whatever they call bouncy houses. And so that regular folks, you know, it's one thing to have a birthday party and it's one thing to take over an entire park with a, you know, with bouncy houses every weekend or multiple bouncy houses. So, or, you know, we've had complaints after complaints after complaints about people putting up loudspeakers, holding impromptu concerts or services in our parks. But remember, the parks belong to the people of Imperial Beach. And so, you know, people complain that they're, especially folks on the beach, imparted by music all the time. As someone who's put on an event, I think for 15 years now, you know, we're really impressed with the professionalism of the city. More importantly, we've made every effort to sort of minimize our public impact and, you know, everything was changed so that the speakers are towards the beach, et cetera, et cetera. So, and we really minimized our impact away from the Pier Plaza. I, I think the purpose of events, Courtney, you laid it out really well, is either to connect our community together, or number two, promote economic development. And so, you know, we have so many visitors in the summer. So I think most cities, especially beach cities, are trying to get people to come outside the summer months, right? So when things are, you know, less busy, that's the case with the Ironman, for example. And most of the other events we have, big events, are outside the summer months. So, you know, and I think the idea of, right, doing their best to promote local businesses and not have just, you know, a mile long food vendors and beer vendors, et cetera, is exactly what we want to do to make sure that that, the monies go back to our, our residents. And that's why the Ironman has such an incredible impact. You know, I think they, folks stay for five or six days at the hotels, they're eating out all the time. And then they're donating tens of thousands of dollars to veterans organizations. It's really an impressive organization, but so are all the other organizations that do it. I think we're going to make sure is that there are some folks who feel they're entitled to hold events without permits and they can do whatever they want, whether it's selling beer or food. And we want to make sure to our residents that it's important. I think the idea of enforcement is important. I think we need to make sure that our, our, whether it's our lifeguards or sheriffs or our public works are letting us know, or, you know, when people hold illegal events. So that's, you know, that stops. We get so many calls from residents who are saying, you know, there's an event going on and we have to follow up with city staff to make sure that those events are stopped. And then number two, I think, you know, obviously when we have a Parks and Rec directive, it'll be important, you know, we, the city invested money building soccer fields at Veterans Park, but those are taken over by adult soccer leagues that don't actually pay any fees to the city so that soccer teams from all over the county can come play soccer in our fields, excluding our local kids and soccer leagues from actually using that, those fields. So we've been really generous and people have taken advantage of that. And our residents are the ones who suffer the most from this. But I really impressed with the professionalism of Courtney and her team, what's really Courtney, and the event scene. But, you know, it's really a team is, you know, fire department, public works, lifeguards, our sheriffs who coordinate to make these happen. So with that, yeah, Mr. Hall has a comment.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is manager Hall. I wanted to ask the council if there's a possibility that we could get a motion to continue this item, only because the current Imperial Beach municipal code says that the city manager will provide approval for the events. And I think it's a really good idea that we place them on consent, but that would require an amendment to our municipal code. So if you don't mind, we could implement the changes we've talked about tonight, as well as bringing an amendment to the municipal code to your next meeting. It would be a real quick item. I think we've had a great discussion, but that way we could take care of all of this at the same time and make sure we're doing this the way the council would like to see it done, if that's okay, Mayor.
So if we continue this, is that right?
Continue this to the, to a future meeting would be great. And we'll make all these changes, including the necessary change to the municipal.
So do we have to have a motion for that then?
Yeah, we need a motion to continue the item.
Is there a motion to continue this item until the next council meeting?
I'm sorry. I had a motion on the floor. I can withdraw that and make the motion to continue. That's the course that we want to take.
I'll second.
Thank you.
There has been a motion by Agiri, second by Spriggs, to continue this item to a future meeting. Councilmember Agiri, how do you vote? Councilmember Leva Gonzalez, how do you vote?
Leva Gonzalez, aye.
Councilmember Fisher, how do you vote?
Fisher, aye.
Mayor Protem Spriggs, how do you vote?
Spriggs, aye.
And Mayor Dina, how do you vote?
Dina, aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thanks, everyone. And now item number two is receive and file the city of Imperial Beach reopening plan for public buildings and facilities. City manager Hall will give the report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is manager Hall. For, for the last couple of years, we've been dealing with something that's a little bit different. Prior to this, we were dealing with the existential issues of pollution in the river valley and sea level rise and, and housing issues. And all of a sudden, we have a new issue, the reopening plan, or, or when the pandemic hit, first the closing plan and now the reopening plan. And there really isn't a, an example that we can follow or best practices that we can follow. So what we have relied upon is the information that we have received from the state and the federal government, for that matter, the Centers for Disease Control, as well as the county health department. And the state of California created a tier program that we've all become very familiar with. We all now know what the purple tier, the red tier, the orange tier, and the yellow tier mean. But we've also been told that this tier, this tier scheme, if you will, will probably be taken away sometime in the middle of June. But it does give us some guidelines and at least some kind of a framework for when we can start to open some of the public buildings that we have here in, in the city. So just real quickly, you can see that right now we are in the orange phase of the, of the pandemic, and we hope that it moves to yellow. We hope that it goes that way and then it goes away altogether. But the, I would like to stress that the orange and the yellow phases are not moments in time. They are a progression. So you can see there in the orange phase where we're talking about the city hall and citizens, senior citizen staff reopening plan, it's an increased onsite staffing. So it's not immediate. It's, we will build that up and we will make sure that we do it in the safest way, but yet the quickest way possible. But I want to, I really want, you can see what's on the screen, so I won't go through all of this. And I think people are comfortable now. They've heard so much about reopening plans and closing plans and tiers and those kinds of things. I just want to back up and talk about maybe the concepts here. The reality is, our staff and your, your staff, we're going to work as hard as we can to help the residents in the community and the businesses get reopened. That's our priority. That's the number one priority. And we will, in the meantime, we'll be working on reopening the city hall and the senior citizen center. But remember that all of our other departments have been working full bore through, through all of this. Our fire department, our public works department, the lifeguards, they have worked right straight through the pandemic and they have, they've done an incredible job. So just want to make sure that you know that we are going to reopen our, tonight is great, right? Tonight, we, we finally have at least somewhat of a semblance of a more live meeting. And we hope that in the very near future, we have all the council members here. This was a, this was a test run tonight. I think it's gone relatively well. And so we're going to continue down this path to get our city buildings and structures reopened. And we're pretty excited about that. But make no mistake, our number one priority is to help our residents and our businesses adjust to reopening as we are reopening as well. But again, it's only city hall and the senior citizens center that's been closed. So I, again, I don't know if the council members have some questions, but this is, it's really hard to say that these are specific points in time. This is a process. And what we are doing is, we are starting to introduce new staff members to city hall. We have more and more people coming on a, on a regular basis. We do try to spread them out. For instance, if there's five members in one of our offices, we try to bring in two at a time. And then we may increase to three, and then four, as our, as we can do it in a safe manner. You can see in the chambers tonight, we've installed a lot of, of safety procedures, the best we can. We have installed all touchless water features in our city hall, both in the restrooms. There are sanitizing stations throughout city hall. So I hope that our residents will feel safe when they come back to city hall. This is their building. They own it. We're excited to have them here. And we're going to get reopened as quickly as we can. So I don't know if there's any questions on that, but, but it's very hard to say that it'll happen on this day or that day, but it will be as quickly as possible. Our, our employees are so excited to get back to work, despite the fact they have just done an incredible job through all of this pandemic. They have, they've worked too many hours. We have watched that very closely. I see when I get my emails. I see when I get responses. I've seen the productivity. I'm worried that our employees have worked way too many hours at home. I don't think they stop when they're at home, but they've done an incredible job. And, and again, just one last time, Mayor, the, the departments that never got to close, the fire department, the lifeguards, public works, I hope people will, will always remember, this has been the greatest year of the city of Imperial Beach. What we've seen and what we've done with each other and what, what we've been able to get through in this pandemic has just been the most rewarding year of my career. And I know the most rewarding year for elected officials to really, really have to do something that's meaningful. And that's, that's what happened during this pandemic. So if there's, it's, it's the last item on the agenda. It's getting late. I'm glad to answer questions. But again, this is kind of more of a phase than it is a, this will happen by happen by Friday afternoon.
Thank you, City Manager Hall. Let's make sure we have, go to public comments first, questions. City Clerk Kelly, do you have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I will start with the public participating via Zoom. For those of you participating via Zoom, please use the raise hand feature if you'd like to speak on this item. Mr. Mayor, there are no oral comments or any written comments.
Great, thank you. And just remember, this is not, we're not voting on anything here, so it's just receive and file this plan, starting with Councilmember Fisher for comments.
No comments, just a lot of excitement and hopefully that we can join you there in the council chambers very soon. But thanks to Andy and the rest of the staff for, for keeping everyone safe, and we look forward to being together real soon.
Great, Mayor Protem Spriggs.
Okay, let me get off of you. Good. Yeah, I, I just have a question. Since we are going to require that people have, have their temperature taken and that their temperature be under 100, 100 or less Fahrenheit in order to be enabled, in order for them to come to work, and ill employees, even if they don't have a temperature, aren't going to be allowed to work. And if one person tests positive, it could force the office to go into a purple or semi-shut-down or shut-down situation again. And since we're going to enforce safety requirements, whatever the, the color code or whatever enforced may be, why don't we also require everyone to be vaccinated? That's, that's my question. Since we're going to do all those other things, and some of them are mandatory, what's, what's, and this is a question that a lot of contacts in our country right now, and that's the vaccine, the vaccination.
I can answer that. Councilmember Spriggs, I actually read a pretty good article about this, and if I'm, if I'm mistaken on this, a private company or an entity can require vaccinations. It's my understanding that the difference is that when Congress, and this is the same thing for the military, if they have an emergency ordinance for a vaccine, then it's hard legally to require people to get vaccinated, I think, as I understand it, public employees. And so there has to be an amendment to that law or change in Congress so that if it's an emergency vaccine, then employers or public agencies can require. That's what I understand the federal government's going by, and I could be wrong, maybe I'm wrong on that, I want to make sure, because I just read that.
Yeah, Councilmember Spriggs, thank you for that question. We are exploring the, all of the legalities around that. Right now, it is, it's a little bit of a sensitive issue, but the mayor is correct, in the public realm, it is very difficult to require vaccinations. What we have done is, we have tried to make it, we've tried to provide every incentive for everyone on our staff who wants to be vaccinated, we will make sure that they get that opportunity, we will pay for time off, we'll do whatever's necessary to give everyone that opportunity to be vaccinated. We have, we have found, of course, in the, in the public realm, there are both religious and health reasons why they, there can be exemptions from even, I think even in the private sector, there are, there can be exemptions for vaccinations. Again, I, I don't want to speak out of turn, I, I, I want to make sure that the, the city, and again, we're all learning a lot of, a lot about vaccinations, right? In reality, if you want to protect yourself, you get vaccinated. Who we're, who we're most worried about, of course, are those who choose not to be vaccinated, probably would be at a higher risk than those who have chosen to be vaccinated. But I think your point, your point is more, but it could impact the, the rest of the staff's ability to stay here at work if we have to close, close back down, so.
Absolutely, and it affects the public in terms of them getting full public services as well, once we reopen. Now, we can require people and have, and I'm sure would, although I didn't read that in the report, require to wear, wear masks at work, right? And, and I would imagine that would be, that, that is a requirement. So I'm, I'm not quite sure why we can require some things and not require others, and I take the mayor's point regarding this not, this being only an emergency approval of the, of the vaccines at this point, which could change any day now. There's petitions by the various companies to get that changed, and it would change. So I guess the question may be as much for our city attorney as for anyone else, assuming that these are approved vaccines, and assuming we could stop people from coming to work if their temperature is above 100, or if they're not willing to wear a mask, what's the difference with the vaccine, assuming it's been approved?
Well, one, one thing, Mr. Spriggs, and I think I've discussed with Mr. Hall, I mean, there are things employers can do, right, if they don't require vaccines.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I was wondering whether the city attorney, I don't know if she's even here, has, has a view on that.
She's here.
Mayor Protem Spriggs, this is Jennifer Lyons, city attorney. So both of what Mr. Hall and Mayor Dina stated are correct. The emergency nature of the vaccine does have an impact on whether public agencies can require it, as well as the fact that both the ADA and religious exemptions also apply regarding mandating vaccines. So it, it is a different and complicated subject that, that the city continues to look into. And the rules are different, unfortunately, for different types of things. So that's, the status of the vaccine is, is exactly how it's been stated at this point in time.
Yeah, my, my question had to do with when it's legal, and it, not legal, when, when the FDA or, and/or other federal authorities approve the vaccines for general use as opposed to emergency use, yes, there, there would need to be exceptions for, you know, clear health reasons or clear religious reasons or whatever, this, yeah, obviously there would be exceptions. And you've said the city's looking into it, so I, I guess that's the answer to the question. I just raise it because there's a, a lot of, of fluff out there about vaccines, and if that is the best way to get our, our city hall back to work and safe and providing services that the public needs and expects, then I'm glad we're looking into that as an option.
One thing, Mayor Protem Spriggs, I, I think something that we've discussed, and, you know, again, if you, you look at the literature on what employers can do, you know, for employees that refuse vaccines, that work with the public, you're in a crowded setting, the city manager has discretion to reassign them so that they're not around the public or change their job duties and job responsibilities or even job title, so that they're not, you know, endangering the public. So I think that, that's an important point, and I think it's something that, I'm assuming the city manager and his staff will be looking into, right? How do we keep not only other staff members safe, but members of the public as well, as well as city council members? And with that, Councilmember Agiri.
No comments. I'm just excited that we're reopening, hopefully it's sooner than later.
Councilmember Lepa Gonzalez?
I'm extremely excited as well, no comments.
No, great. I want to thank everybody, and then again, thank city staff for this, and also all of the members of our public who are getting vaccinated, right? I mean, a lot of good data released today and groundbreaking studies, again, this is probably arguably some of the greatest scientific breakthroughs in, in medicine as well and human history, right? The development of these vaccines, and then the application of these vaccines and what's coming out now in studies in the United States and globally are that these vaccines are extremely effective, including against these new variants. Studies that have been done in other countries as well as in the United States, and that, you know, the thinking, I think, has changed just in the last few days in that those of us who are vaccine, vaccinated are pretty safe. Those who aren't, and you see this in like counties in eastern Oregon that are seeing spikes, and, and those who are getting sick, and hospitalization rates are skyrocketing in counties that people refuse to get vaccinated. So you're going to see that dichotomy, right, where California has done a really good job of, and obviously residents are getting vaccinated. I think today was either the first or second day that UCSD healthcare had not seen any positive tests for the COVID test, which is extraordinary, right, to see the change that we've made. And so I think Imperial Beach is on the right path, and, you know, we did, I think collectively, we did a good job in working with the county to make sure that we focus vaccinations here, to make sure that South County was receiving its fair share of vaccinations. If you see the vaccination rates, you see that South County has some of the highest rates now, and it didn't, that wasn't the case when it started, so I want to thank the county for that. So we have some way to go, but I think it's also important to leadership, there's a reason we're doing all this with the vaccines, and that is to get open. So I just know, know for the public, you know, you're going to see me riding my bike around without my mask on because the CDC says that's fine. You're going to see me walking around on crowded areas without my mask on because the, you know, out in open public areas, because the CDC says that's exactly what we should be doing. I think we all need to be safe, but at some point, we're going to have to, we have to collectively move forward, and we're never, the consensus, and Dr. Fauci said, is, we're not going to get rid of the risk. You know, the fact that a lot of folks out there are refusing to get vaccinated just makes it tougher, and that's why you see the federal government, I think it was yesterday, announced that they're really going to start being a lot more strategic and creative and innovative in how they get vaccines on, into harder reach populations and for those who don't want them. But you're going to start seeing a lot of events and activities that require vaccinations in the private sector, or, you know, you get privileged, like, I think the Dodgers did that, and I'm sure the Padres may be doing that as well. So I want to thank all the residents who've taken this very seriously. It's clear IB has, clear our city has, and, right, I'm looking forward to getting back to normal, and I think it'll be all of us to urge our residents and family members and friends to continue to get vaccinated so we can get back to normal quicker. And I know my kids got vaccinated, they're in their age group, so they can get vaccinated this week, and so for me, at least, I can give my, my youngest son, who was in South America during the lockdown, who just got back from, in the United States and got vaccinated right away, a big hug. So that's the most important thing to me. I think I've given him one hug in the last year, so, you know, that's all that matters to me, right? So anyway, with that, thank you so much, City Manager Hall and all our staff. And with that, I would like to adjourn the open session and then let the city council know to log out of this meeting and use a separate Zoom log-on information to join the closed session, and thanks to everybody that participated. Thank you.